I'd like to call this meeting to order. Roberta, would you please do the roll?
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yes.
Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
Supervisor Foy.
Yes.
And Supervisor Bennett.
Here. And do we have anybody here for a moment of affirmation? No spirit cards or anything? All right. I just asked the board to pause for a moment and reflect on your day. And Supervisor Zaragoza, would you like to lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge is to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our individual or liberty and justice for all.
We're ready for a motion on the minutes. Okay, it's been moved to continue the minutes for one week. We need a second. Have you done your motion? There you go. There we go. We're ready to vote. And the exciting drama every week. What will happen? Oh, I can't wait. The tension. And... I couldn't make my mind up. It was just too tough of a decision. All right. And the minutes will be continued for a week. Agenda review. Ms. Robinson.
Yes, Chairman Bennett. On consent item number 12, there's a revised board letter, specifically page two. Also, our 930 number 16, we're asking that to be continued till next week. Policy matters, item 43, your board received distribution of the Senate Bill 346 in its current form. Item 41, we're asking that that be continued till next week. And policy item number 44, we've distributed the text of a presentation that is going to be made by Mr. Kaiserman, and that has been posted as well as provided to your board.
Okay. Do we have any other modifications to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to ask that the item on item 15 just be pulled for discussion purposes. This is the general plan update annual report.
Okay. Item 15, we'll pull from consent. Anything else? I believe we've had some requests for item 44 to be at 1:30 today when we do our other 1:30 items. So I think I'd like to go ahead, and I think we're going to be pretty busy this morning anyway with Air Pollution Control District and stuff. So we'll move that item to 1:30. Anything else?
Motion seconded.
Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And that agenda stands as revised. We're ready for the consent calendar items 10 through Moved and seconded with our... Ready to vote. Now Supervisor... And then Supervisor Parks, item 15. The consent calendar items 10 through 14 are passed.
Thank you. This item is a requirement that we get a status report on the general plan, and it also gives us an idea about what is in the hopper at the planning department. Some things are initiated by applicants, which is the majority of the work, I think, for the planning department. Some things are initiated by the Board of Supervisors. And as I look through some of the items, I have a request that we get some idea about the priority, particularly of the county-initiated requests. I look at, for example, the scenic resource protection on page four of 22. It was estimated at one time for March, and now it's into fall. I know the housing element is going to take up some time. We've been working and reworking that one. But I think what I'd like to be able to receive is kind of an update on where we stand on some of these. For example, the Green Belt agreements is another one. So in terms of when they'll be coming back to us and if the board can have some input on that.
So you modify, you want to modify the motion slightly instead of a receiving file?
I do appreciate the information we receive, but what I would like to be able to get is a report on kind of a prioritization of a time schedule, when we can anticipate these. And I also understand that the planning department is under some real fiscal constraints that are going to be increasing. So I want to make sure that the efforts from that department are lined up with our efforts here at the board. I hate for them, for example, to be working on an effort that isn't as essential, I think, as others.
So would you request me to get, to ask the staff, planning director, to prioritize those things that are board-initiated or internal to general plan policies and guidelines? And anything that is perhaps related to some change in law, to prioritize those, otherwise not prioritize those that are applicant-driven, because those are applicant-driven and are in a process track. So everything...
That's right. We don't have any say on that one, but I guess I'm looking more at kind of a time schedule so that the things that are up and on the front burner are the things that we agree should be up there, since we initiated them to begin with.
My own sense is a little bit risky to sort of say prioritize and ask staff to try to do that because of the potential political nature. I'm happy to see Ms. Robinson nodding her head. I think it may be more appropriate to say, what is staff's anticipated timeframe for each of these things at this point in time? Maybe their timeframe is such because that's when state law says they have to do it. Other ones are because that's when they know they've got a grant for it. I think that's a little bit, that's a little bit more appropriate in terms of language. So could we just make this motion to receive and file and also ask for staff to, to the best of their ability, and they may not be able to do it all, identify the timeframes for each of these items?
Thank you. Yeah, and that is what I am looking at. I know some of these items are, have not been assigned to planners. They have not been scheduled. To me, it's a good idea to get a timeframe. So yes, that is what I'm requesting.
Well, and I would ask, too, if they can, to put some kind of a staffing time required to complete the job. That would give us an estimate of the cost, timeline, process.
Okay.
I think that'd be really helpful.
It looks like Ms. Robinson's trying to push her button.
Yes, I was just going to say that we have come to the board before with a list of what was anticipated, and your board has taken the opportunity to look at them and consider giving additional direction so we could come back with a report from the planning department like that and have an opportunity for your board to look at it.
Great. Good.
So dust that off. I don't think we want them to create a whole new report.
Right. There was one done not too long ago, and I think some of these things, unfortunately, some of these items were still there. So we've come back with dates anticipated, and you'll have a discussion regarding that.
Thank you. I agree with the schedule and then also looking at the kind of resources that are necessary. I think it would be really helpful for us to get an idea of where they are. So I would appreciate that report back, and just they hear the conversation. I'm sure we'll get that. And other than that, I'd be glad to go ahead and approve item 15.
All right. So we're going to prioritize a lot of work to create a report about the priorities. No, I'm joking. All right, item 15. All right, we're going to move to receive and file with the modified...
Second.
...direction to also come back to staff with a report. Moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. We are now done with our consent items. We're ready for public comment. Do we have public comment cards, Roberta? No public comment cards. We're ready for board comments. Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. I hope everybody had a great Easter holiday. And one of the things I do want to mention is that we had talked about, one of the city councilmen from Moore Park who was in the hospital has died last week, and Gary Levenburg. And I want to adjourn in memory of him and some, everybody else on this list, but just make a few comments that when he died last Wednesday, it was tragic for anybody and for the family and everything else, but also for the community. I mean, Gary was a gentleman who continued to give and give and was involved in so many different things. He's one of the guys that got the Rotary Civil War enactment that we may have all been to. He's been involved in a whole bunch of citizen advisory committees. I mean, he's just one of those kind of guys that really believed in public service and gave an awful lot. And as a matter of fact, he was only a temporary city councilperson because they wanted to appoint somebody that wasn't going to run and give everybody a fair chance to run in Moore Park, and he was one to take on that responsibility. So it was just tough to see, and you know, he's married for 25 years, has three young adult children, that he leaves, and just a tragic thing. So anyway, those are my comments for today.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I was not in attendance at our last meeting. I was at the, California Air Resource Board has the Regional Targets Advisory Committee, and I was able to attend that. I'm one of two elected officials that sit on that board, and there's 21 members on that board. And the other elected official has been having trouble getting to the meetings, too. So it was an important meeting, and particularly that meeting, because it kind of threw some things upside down as far as I look at it. We had already, the CARB Air Resource Board had already determined that cities and counties need to look at land use and transit issues to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 5 million metric tons by 2020. And at that meeting, that number all of a sudden became open for discussion, and I thought that had already been determined. So that is important because it will show how much efforts and whether it is achievable. So I think the 5 million metric tons is an achievable goal, but I do have some concerns that that might be raised to levels that may not be. So I was glad to be there in attendance and make sure that counties and cities are heard on that. Additionally, I was able to attend a nice event that St. Pascal Bayon's Men's Club does regularly each year, recognizing a firefighter and a sheriff deputy of the year. And this year, we recognized Deputy Brett Miller and Fire Captain Kevin Davis. And that was a nice event to be able to attend. I also want to invite the board and anyone who's interested to the SCAG General Assembly. This is a double-sided sheet of paper, which meets on May 7th and 8th. And on May 8th, they're going to be having a workshop on SB 375, which is the law that created the ARTAC that I sat, that I stood on. On Friday, May 8th, they'll be having a workshop on that where SCAG will be unveiling their conceptual sustainable community strategy, and that will be for the entire region, and it incorporates Ventura County, which is, again, looking at how we can get to the goals of what I thought was 5 million metric tons, but to greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. I also wanted to take this opportunity to recognize some county employees. We had a wonderful assistant from Maria Gil Maraga with the Human Services Agency who was able to assist a single mom who was facing eviction and helping to steer her towards cow works, food stamps, medical, the whole gamut of services that she may well be eligible for. And you just realize in these kinds of situations, people can be left, you know, pretty hopeless. And it's really nice when you have a staff member that steps up and follows through and is able to help. So I really appreciated her work. And then I also received comments regarding Deputy Public Administrator Jean Clark, who was able to assist and be very much appreciated by a resident in my district, actually trying to, after 10 years, finding her father's remains and being able to get them and to have a burial for them. And just said, the people working in the public guardians office, administrator's office, are caring, compassionate, truly heroic people and do a very tough job every day with the utmost integrity and honesty. And I just, it's nice to hear about that. So I do want to log Jean Clark. Additionally, I was able to attend a really neat event in the Santa Rosa Valley, which was the ribbon cutting of the Santa Rosa Park. And I have a little slideshow of some of the photos. This was the invitation, and if you'd like to just go through, I think we have about nine photos of that. And while we do that, I just wanted to mention some of the people that were involved, because this went over a course of many, many, many years. So here are some of the individuals, and I'm sure I might be leaving off some, and I apologize. But this project was to combine not only the park project, but also the watershed protection district was doing some stream bed restoration right next door. So we did both projects at the same time. We were able to take some of the dirt from the widening of the stream bed and use it for the park. But this is one of those historical looks at Santa Rosa Valley Park, and a lot of those photos, I don't know if you can see, are from newspaper articles and showing really it is, has always been kind of an equestrian park. So if you want to go ahead and just go ahead and show those photos, and I'll mention the names. These are people... the names, these are people starting to come to the event. There is Ron Van Dyke, Quanky Natch, of supervisors, where everything is in that wonderful bathroom in the background, and these are some of the new trees that they started planting in the park. We had a great turnout, I would say, we were able to get food for about 200 people, and it was all gone at the end of the day. The Caneo Recce Park District brought a barbecue there, and some folks that volunteered barbecuing, and a horse rescue group had some booths there, and turned out to be a very nice event, lots of equestrians, probably somewhere in the neighborhood of 50 or so horse riders out there and able to enjoy the trails, and it was a really nice event, and some of the people involved include Marty Robinson, Noel Claybaum, Jeff Pratt, Paul Grossfeld, Chris Stevens, Carl Novak, Teresa Lubin, Keith Villager, Butch Britt, Steve Morgan, Chris Hook, Nancy Francis, Kim Rodriguez, Pam Lindsay, Terry Newman, Michelle Smith, Joe Rendizo, Jeff Barnes, and then some of those folks that are no longer working with us, Johnny Johnston, Paul Ruffin, Ron Coons, Ginger Girardi, because it goes back so many years, but it included having to remove a couple of cars from the creek bed we discovered when we cleaned out the creek, and that, it was just a small section really, that we were looking in, that we cleared, and if you can find two cars in that batch, you can just imagine how many cars are in that creek. We also had the leasebells vario, an endangered bird species, show up that stalled construction for quite some time. We were able to work with the Ventura County Transportation Commission who helped fund deceleration acceleration lanes because of the City of Thousand Oaks uncooperativeness, we had to actually go out and buy some easements, and so that took some time and effort, and were able to track down owners in Utah to buy some easements so we can have access. Doing both projects and seeing, there was a lot of coordination, a lot of effort, took about six months to hammer out an agreement with the City of Thousand Oaks staff, everyone signed, and then the city council decided to table it, so, but it was a lot of work, and it was a really wonderful, really appreciated effort. And I wanted to particularly thank Ron Van Dyke, who is the manager on this project, and was able to work forward, the Board of Supervisors spent some time, I think we came to the board maybe three or four times with this one, got a host that will help to reduce costs, but I have a, another thing I want to present, Ron, if you'd like to come up, we framed one of the photos, and this is a little plaque that says, "Santa Rosa Park Opening, March 28, 2009." So I wanted to just give that to you. Thank you very much, it was a great opening, and I just, the residents so much appreciate it, so thank you, Ron. Thank you, and it really has gone on for almost a dozen years, but it's now the only park in District Two, and it's nice to have one. And then just finally, I'd like to close in honor of a few people, and we have had some very significant people in, in my district pass away. Just recently found out, I think yesterday, that actually John Broome has died, and that is just a, a major shocker for us. John Broome was very involved in the Cal State University Channel Islands, donated considerable funds for a library that was built there, came up with the idea with a dolphin sculpture, was his idea, that, just a, a, a real gentleman, and we consider him really the heart of the Cal State University Channel Islands, and I know we'll have some major recognitions for the loss of John Broome, and he will be missed, and he was a major benefit contributor to a lot of different causes in our area, so I did want to recognize him, I know Supervisor Long will probably also like to comment. And then additionally, we lost Sid Hamilton, a major employer, Hamilton Chevrolet in our area, John Crossen also passed away. He has been involved in everything in Thousand Oaks, from being on the Board of Senior Concerns, Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, Businessman of the Year, Man of the Year, Chairman of Caneo Valley Days, founding member of the Stagecoach Inn Museum, Historical Society, Don Triumpo, so he, I, I was able to appoint him on our Thousand Oaks Investment Review Committee in Thousand Oaks, a major player in two different Rotaries in Thousand Oaks, so he'll be sorely missed. Also, another individual who died in my district is Lawrence Elder, who was a member of the Board of Supervisors in Santa Barbara County, and then just the tragic loss of Francis Toner, Westlake High School graduate who died in combat, Navy Lieutenant, junior grade, he was shot in Afghanistan and killed, and he was just a star athlete, very popular, always smiling, really, "The best our society has to offer," said his coach, James Banker. He was just so proud of what he was doing, and had great meaning for him, and I know he, he is sorely missed in our community. And then I just also wanted to finally mention Horatio Coswell, just a very active supporter of protecting our community and our open space, and I know he too will be sorely missed, so with that, that concludes my comments, and thank you for the extra time.
You're welcome, thank you, and congratulations, Mr. Van Dyke. Supervisor Zaragoza.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'd like to report that last Tuesday, Bill Gallagher from my staff attended the grand opening for the new Veterans Administration Clinic in the Palms over in Oxnard. I'd like to commend the VA for this new clinic, it's wonderful for our veterans, you know, to be able to get health care here in Oxnard as opposed to driving all the way to Los Angeles. It's my understanding that there's 100% for veterans. So if any veterans are listening to this, that they need more information, they can call my office at 654-2613 for more information. Also last week, last Wednesday, Supervisor Bennett and myself and the FEMA representative, Kay Schaefer, met with the County Watershed Protection Employees and the City of Oxnard Representatives regarding the flood insurance, and we made some good progress, some of the things that we're talking about is, the initial map showed quite a few homes in Oxnard under the flood plain, over 3,000, and after our staff and city staff getting together, they reduced that to a considerable amount of property, properties that are, or that should have been covered by flood insurance, so I'd like to thank our, our staff for that. Last night I attended the NICE Columbus Public Safety Awards, you know, I had the privilege of attending that, that award last night, honoring our fire department, Oxnard PD, the Highway Patrol, Coast Guard, Naval Base, and, and the keynote speaker was Highway Patrol Commissioner Joseph Farrell. An unusual thing happened last night, in the middle of his presentation, the cops ran out from one, Oxnard PD ran from one door, and then the Highway Patrol on another door, and county deputies on the other side, they were running after what they call a dumb robber, a thief. They caught him right off the bat, this guy was trying to assault somebody there in the parking lot, and there was probably several police cars and Highway Patrol cars on one side, Oxnard PD on the other, Wayne Eme on the other, Oxnard Fire Department, I don't know who else it was, but they caught him right off. Even the, the commissioner says, you know, "That's our, our employees at work, our, our police officers at, at work." Half of the, of the NICE Columbus Hall was emptied, and they caught him right off the bat. Oxnard PD was the one that caught him. Dumb, dumb as anything, but anyway. Also like to commend our staff to continue to impress with the dedication of our county employees. Butch Britt, you know, made a great presentation at the El Rio Mac, it was helpful in resolving a variety of issues, traffic issues, roadway maintenance, flooding issues, and so forth, so I'd like to thank him for that. And Jim Del Perdang from Resource Management Agency was very helpful in resolving quote compliance issues at El Rio Strickling Neighborhoods, and I'd like to thank them for that too. And of course, Mike Aranda from our deputies has been very involved in helping us with the traffic safety programs and crime prevention programs in El Rio, so I'd like to commend them for that too. And also, I'm, today I'm wearing a little ribbon, blue ribbon, and this is on behalf of the National Child Abuse Prevention Month in support of, and I have a little ribbon with me, and then I'd like to adjourn in memory of my constituency. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, and I always marvel at the intelligence of some of our felons. I remember the, the great scene where the guy planned this thing at night, and he was running down this dark alley, but he had those reflective Adidas's on, so they just, they could just see the back of his shoes all the way down, right? Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you. Couple of things I'd like to report out to the board, last week there was a meeting focused on homeless and what are we doing collectively in our region to work with the cities and public-private partnerships on homeless needs, it was called the Bridges, Bridges Two Meeting, and I attended for a short time, but I was very impressed with the broad representation that was there, the task forces from almost every city who's tackling this, the social service representatives sitting at the tables with the, our social service reps, with the faith community, with the advocates, it really was an excellent turnout. They had, a consultant came in to talk about ways to approach the population perhaps looking differently from what is common practice and thinking quote outside the box, to see what we could do differently, to remove barriers, to change and to address strategies needed to perhaps do things different from what we have in the past. Quote was said that "Change is hard and the need to act overwhelms any willingness people have to learn," and, and what I heard in the time I was there from, from the task force work is that, and as we know, our numbers are, have gone up, the needs are great, the resources, as we know, are going to be fewer, so we must do things smarter, more efficiently, but what was really stressed is to have even more empathy and compassion for those we're going to serve because there are very tough times, and, and tough times being faced by people who perhaps haven't had to face tough times in years. So I applaud United Way of Ventura County, Ventura Social Services Task Force, Ventura County Homeless and Housing Coalition for pulling together this second conference. I applaud those who attended and that, there again were significant turnout of city task forces that have formed to work with their population in the cities on homeless, and, and there was a task force that was, was focused on how our law enforcement professionals interact with, and other emergency personnel interact with the homeless population, so I, I think everyone came away feeling it was time well spent. There was an article recently in the paper, an op-ed by Dr. Richard Rush from our university talking about what the university is doing to reach out to address the needs of homeless folks in, in the university community, and specifically homeless children. Their Crossroads Program that really works with the homeless kids kindergarten through 12th grade, trying to work with the education community to assist in programs, to assist kids, support for schools on, school, School on Wheels program, so it takes all of us, and I was, have always been impressed with the university's willingness to, not willingness, but feel it's their mission to be a part of the community, to take the, not just the academic excellence, but the community mission as, as, as a core value for them and to engage in what the needs are in the community, so it's all a part of how we're going to accomplish and move forward to accomplish some challenging goals that have just become tougher with the, with the economy and the, and the whole 10-year plan mission, so I appreciate the, the work of the forums and the folks who've joined us in this work and knowing we've got tough times in front of us. Wanted to applaud our Camaro Airport and getting awarded the $1.5 million in stimulus funds. Very happy that we'll be getting those dollars because as we know, it's the airports are run as an enterprise, and that helps us to keep the airports as top-notch condition and, and provided as a opportunity for our business partners and the business parks and our, and our, and our, our community to have passenger service, and I, the airport's doing a great job in being first in line and getting out there to capture some stimulus And fast approaching is May 4th, registration for folks to register to vote on May 19th, and we'll be talking about some of that a little later as we're confronted with our budget challenges and how they're so intricately entwined with the May 19th election. So just to let folks know, May 4th, registration opens to register to vote and, and encourage people to look at voting absentee or look at doing permanent by mail, and, well, encourage people to vote, the bottom line, so. I'd like to also comment on the passing of Gary Lowenberg, just a very nice gentleman, I didn't know him well, other than served with him in the Economic Development Collaborative since he was appointed, and he was always there, always engaged, brought the business sense and expertise to the discussion, and just a nice man, so I'm sorry, certainly joined and sorry for the passing, and I know the community's feeling that very much, and also, as Supervisor Parks mentioned, the Navy Lieutenant Frankie Toner, thank you for adjourning, and certainly knew that you would, Lauren Bianchi and my staff went to school with him, was a good friend, so very much feels the tragedy of that loss. And then last for John Spore Broome, who is known to all of us as Jack, and as you mentioned, Supervisor Parks, he has always been just a very generous man, the entire Broome family, but certainly the John Spore Broome Library and the university, the $5 million contributed by Jack was really the jumpstart to get that wonderful library designed and built, and he has always been engaged with the community in, in philanthropy, but in his passion for Ventura County, just a nice, nice man, good old school gentleman farmer. And that, that wraps my comments, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, we've had a full week of work by supervisors based on all of those comments, and want to thank you for particularly bringing that information about the homeless conference and all of the efforts that are out there, as I think, I think things are really germinating now and starting to really come together. I'd like to ask the board to adjourn in memory of the people on this list, and I just wanted to, almost thought about this as my moment of affirmation, but I didn't, just to kick us off with this quote, that I had the pleasure of reading verbally, but I wanted to get it out there for the board members. "This is the difference between ideological advocacy and holding public office. Having accepted partial responsibility for the nation's well-being, one assumes an obligation that goes beyond bumper sticker slogans. Certitude is the enemy of wisdom, and in office it is wisdom, not certitude, that is required." And I think, I just wanted to remind us of this as we go into these budget times and all the challenges that we're going to have, is that we're going to have to ask for all the wisdom that could possibly be granted us, and I think it's a very interesting idea that certitude is the enemy of wisdom, and in public office that's what we have to have and be able to focus on. With that, I just, last week we had the conversation about the ombudsman and trying to support that program and the cost effectiveness of that program, and just had the statistic I wanted to read out to you, and that is, more than 90% of nursing homes were cited for violations of federal and health safety standards last year in this country, more than 90%. Problems included infected bed sores, medication mix-ups, poor nutrition, and abuse. Problems included infected bedsores, medication mix-ups, poor nutrition, and abuse in neglected patients. So there's just no question, this is one of the things, Mr. Yarrow of the American Health Cancer Association wrote, "The inspection system is broken. It does not reliably measure quality. It doesn't create any positive incentives." I think we're in far better shape than that here in Ventura County, but the reason we're in far better shape is because of those volunteers that keep getting into those skilled facilities and the nursing homes to make sure that those seniors are in good shape. And with that, I'll end my comments so that we can move on and try to get our department heads done here. We have 25 minutes before we get to our 9:45, so we'll start with our Fire Protection District, item 36, unless I'm missing something. The 9:30 has been pulled. All right. Mr. Roper, good morning.
Morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Robinson, Bob Roper, Fire Protection District. The item before you, number 36, is seeking approval for you for the application for a grant submission to the Department of Homeland Security. Back in January, I came to your board with an introduction of a program called Leave Early or Stay and Defend. It was a new way how we could help try to involve the public into part of the wildland fires problem. What this grant is intended to do is help fund that effort and what the final message is going to be. And when I say what the final message is going to be, is shortly after I made the presentation to your board, we had the tragic fires in Australia. And as you've read in the paper, there's been a lot of controversy whether the Australian model is the appropriate model or not. So I've been working with my partners in Southern California, and today we are meeting this afternoon to try to finalize what the new message is. And when I do have that finalized, I'll return back to your board to provide you that data. It's going to be similar, but it's going to focus not on the message of stay and defend, it's going to focus on get out of Dodge when you're told to. And so, but the biggest part of the program is trying to get the public involved and do the preparation work. The money from this grant will be used for printed materials, for instructional DVDs and stuff for the public to be able to understand the message. And then what we're also going to be doing is this money, we're going to reach out to our CERT groups in the county to help be the ambassadors of this program, because there's enough people to reach out to, and the secret we found with CERT now is their neighbors talking to neighbors, and that's really how the message is going to get out. So that's what this money will be funded for. There is a 20% match if we're fully approved for the grant, and that money's included within our budget. Available if you have any questions.
Do you have any questions? Thank you very much.
Most recommended action?
It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. While we're waiting for that vote, I just want to point out two quick things. I just think it's easy for us to take for granted the leadership that our fire department sort of exercises statewide in terms of policies and stuff, and I think we have really found the right focus for CERTs, and I appreciate the fire department's support, and that is train people to take care of people in their own neighborhood. And a lot of CERTs want to try to expand that into, they want to sort of be, you know, actually start interacting with the fire department on a more regional level, et cetera, but I think this focus is really there, and this would be perfect. What are you going to do in your neighborhood to get out when the time is identified for that and safeguard your property in addition to that? So thank you very much.
And Mr. Chair, just to comment, too, I would hope that the baseline support that communities take in helping with wildland and helping with their communities and fires is what we've adopted all these years as we debatement notices are going out for we debatement. That's just one of those no-brainers. So good work.
Thank you. That motion passed, I believe, and, yep. There we go. Thank you. And we are now at our Human Services Agency's item 37. Mr. Zimmerman.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. I'm Barry Zimmerman with the Human Services Agency, and what is before you today is a budget adjustment letter that is needed in various areas to give the appropriations and funding to finish out this budget year. I'll just highlight those areas and make a few comments. The details are in the letter, and I can address your questions there. The four areas that we're looking at for appropriations adjustments are with the RAINE transitional living center, our direct aid budget, the IHSS Public Authority, as well as the workforce development programs. Briefly, each of them have kind of unique characteristics of why they're needed adjustments at this time. The main reasons are that shortfall in realignment revenue has had an impact on our direct aid budgets and our mandatory programs, and so it is needed in order to make those whole, some adjustments are needed, as well as increased service levels in our mandated programs have also put undue stress on our budgets from the regional assumptions when the budgets were adopted. The RAINE Transition Living Center, this is an anticipated budget adjustment, knowing going in the year that the budget was funded at a certain level, that it would anticipate throughout the year we'd minimize costs as best we could, but had to come back at some time in order to adjust that budget. Fortunately, this year, we do have savings in our regular program areas that we are just moving over in order to cover those shortfalls. In the direct aid budget, the main reasons for the adjustments there are the loss of realignment revenue, as well as increased services in mandated programs such as CalWorks, foster care, and those type elements associated with that program. Similarly, with the IHSS Public Authority, increased hours and services associated with that program, coupled with the loss of realignment, which realignment funds that program very heavily, has caused a shortfall in which adjustments are needed there. We are fortunate with the federal stimulus packages and with FMAP, which is a federal participation in Medi-Cal, has come through and is anticipated to shift some of our funding ratios, which would give us the needed revenue in order to cover the shortfalls for this year. And then finally, with the workforce investment, workforce development area, those are unilateral mods and grants that are awarded throughout the year that are given to us from state allocations, and this is adjustments in order to accept and get the appropriations for it. Before I turn it over for your questions, I'd just like to address real quickly a program area that you may have been made aware of with the IHSS Public Authority. Yesterday, in Los Angeles Times, there was an article on fraud that was detected in that program throughout Los Angeles. And I'll address real quickly what we do here in order to prevent fraud and to prevent abuse and overissuances of provider payments and authorization of hours. I'd like to say we do not run it the same as Los Angeles, so we're not identical program structure as Los Angeles, but we do administer the same program. Part of our fraud prevention efforts are that we do have a quality control unit that is separate and apart from the program, that's housed in a different area within the agency that has independence to review activities that goes on within the public authority and within the IHSS program. What they do is they monitor reports, such as death record reports, admissions into hospitals and institutions, the social security matches, and as well as the payroll function under the public authority does time card signature reviews and reviews time card accuracy.
Excuse me, Mr. Zimmerman, as you go along, would you point out what, you're pointing out what we do, would you point out what we do that's different from what Los Angeles does and others identify?
Well, yeah, okay.
To the extent that you're aware of it?
To the extent I'm aware of, as best I know, and the paper identified some of the shortfalls that Los Angeles had, were that we're not timely in reviewing death records. So an individual or provider, recipient of services may have passed away, and yet the provider continues submitting that as if work is still being provided for that individual. We do that and have a death record match within a week, and so we're very, very aware of the activity. Now, apparently, in Los Angeles, that was not being done timely, and so a lot, long lag times would occur. Similarly, with admissions into hospitals, as well as in other care facilities, we monitor the admissions there. The paper pointed out that Los Angeles had a significant lag associated with that. So I think as far as we go, our program size and our staffing level right now is adequate to do those functions, and we're able to keep on top of it. In addition, the public authority does a monitoring of time card signatures, as well as 300-hour reports, which are reports of authorized hours that the providers are able to do and provide services, and that's kind of the threshold. Anything higher than that is kind of, well, can someone physically do that? And so any exceptions from that will be monitored and flagged out, and so that's reviewed. Another area that was, that I don't know how Los Angeles does it, but the main article pointed out that the fraud occurred within the social worker itself that was authorizing services and was doing that through relationships that they had. So that was an internal problem. What we do within our social worker side that authorizes these services, we do do case reviews of their cases. And so we have independent supervisors and so forth reviewing the cases and what they're authorizing as services, as well as we have a public health nurse on staff that we contract through Public Health to verify all the medical elements that they may have. If a disability is noted, that this is a disability, then Public Health Nurse will review that paperwork and even do a house visit to assure that the paperwork is in order and that the claim of the disability is real. Now, I don't know if Los Angeles does that, but that was another weakness pointed out. So we feel we have a comprehensive approach to, for prevention and detection. Now, it is not our role to investigate fraud, that is the state's obligation to do so. All we do is identify anomalies and areas of risk, and if it's warrants, we will refer that to the state, and it's the state's obligation to actually do the fraud investigation. Hopefully, that was a lot in very quick order, but that kind of gives you an overview of the program at this time.
And could you, not today, but could you get back with us about how effective the state is with their investigations? How many complaints? How many suspicious incidents have we turned in? To what extent have they followed up? Because in many other areas, I know the state is simply not, you know, doing much enforcement. Supervisor Long, you've got a comment?
Yes, and thank you, and I appreciate having those details. I think it's very important for the public to know that we're doing our very, very best to stay on top of both the delivery of the service and the quality and certainly any fraud potential. So I appreciate those checkpoints that we have, important to have. I also noted in the article, state rep talking about computer system. I hate to hear that coming from the state, because that makes us all one, you know, we've been there, done that with horrible situations with state-proposed computer transitions, so.
Yeah, we are in the midst of upgrading the statewide computer system, and the project has been going underway for some time. We're preparing and working with the state, and our implementation date is, I think, October of 2010. So we have about one year out before that will be fully realized in an automated system, a new one.
Well, I know we have to work with them, and I just hope we're as hands-on as possible so we can at least do the best we can locally for our system. If I might, Mr. Chair, I'd also like to thank you for the Issues and Trends Report. I think it really gives us a good report on caseloads and what we're seeing in the community.
Thank you.
Helps us keep on top of that. And I'd also ask if you would set some time to come into my office, and I'd like to talk about the RAINE program a little further.
Absolutely.
I think we've been, not think, we have been supportive of this program. I just want to check in with you to see if it's still running as best as it can. Is the model still the best model, or should we be looking at other models? What's our caseload there?
Yeah, on that note, thank you for the invitation. I'll be more than happy to do that. I have taken and we're finishing compiling a report of my activity over the last year with the RAINE facility.
Oh, good.
And so we've kind of taken from where it was originally, where we found it, what we've done for the year, and what are the anticipated future directions of it. So I'll work with Marty on how best to communicate that information out and be more than happy to meet with anyone.
I'd like to see where, what the level of participation is from the city and others, because it is to be, its origin and intent is to be a regional-supported facility. So thank you, appreciate that you're working on that.
Supervisor Parks.
Actually, I was just going to go where you just went. As you're showing, some $233,000 shortfall we're expecting with the RAINE facility, which is the only homeless shelter, full-time, year-round, that we have in the county, and it's not composed of just not unincorporated residents, it's mostly composed of residents from the cities. And I wonder if you can tell us which cities do you know do contribute?
I'll hesitate to do that, just in case, but I'll gather that information. The contributions from the cities I know is minimal, and so that is an issue associated with the regional center and participation from the city jurisdictions.
Thank you. And also, the comment regarding the IHSS program, looking at 250,000 additional hours that will be spent by IHSS workers helping people in their homes, and I'm glad to see the safeguards that we are putting in place. But it is a, it is a system throughout the state that has been having a lot of fraud, so everything we can do to at least identify it and look forward to the report Supervisor Bennett pointed out, to see how the state is doing following up on those concerns. Thank you.
Ms. Robinson.
Yes, thank you, Barry, and thank you for following up with advising us about the fraud situation, and we try to put in the best systems that we can to, but no system will protect us from everything, so, but I'm pleased to hear about the systems that we do have in place. I also didn't want it lost on the board and the public, that in fact, federal stimulus money is offsetting the costs associated with the losses of realignment, up to the tune of some $614,000. So in this IHSS arena, I just wanted to be sure that that did not get lost, that the federal stimulus money is starting to have an impact on what we can do and what we can't do, so.
Very good, thank you.
Can I, I might also, please, the county staff of HSAs is doing extraordinary work in very tough and challenging times. I know caseloads are tough, emotions are high, so just thank them for that. Good work.
Thank you. Anybody else? Supervisor Foy.
Barry, I know, just going through this a little bit, you've been some work to find some savings to help offset some of this, and I appreciate your work and to find those savings. At the end of the day, what is our net cost to the county that we're going to have to pick up now?
With this item here?
Yeah, all these items, yeah, together. Is it this $829,000, because it looks like the $614 was offset?
Yes, the $829,000 is associated with the direct aid is the general fund portion.
General fund portion.
Yeah, and the savings that we, in our programs, is just a transfer from one side to the other side, from one budget unit to the other, so that was already budgeted, so it's not new additional general fund.
But the $829 is new additional?
That's correct.
So out of the, so this hopefully gets you through the rest of the year?
This will give us appropriations and funding through the end of June.
Okay, back to Ms. Robinson. Thanks.
I just wanted to point out that we are taking that as recommended from contingency. Our contingency is just under about $2.9 million right now. This will move it back down to about $2 million. Your board may recall that in some of the prior adjustments, we moved money into contingency. So anyway, this, that's where we'll be at with contingency at the end of this. Thank you.
Supervisor Dargos.
I just want to thank you for an excellent job on your staff, too. Thank you so much.
All righty. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. Item 37 passes unanimously, and now I think we have a number of things we can move relatively quickly with the CEO's office. We'll prove we can spend money very quickly. That's right. Lots of money. First, item number 37, 38, is our authorization, your board's authorization, for issuance of our annual tax and revenue anticipation notes in an amount not to exceed $160 million. Current year issuance was $155 million. This is a cash flow borrowing to get us through the dry period between July 1st and December 10th.
10th, when our, when our property tax comes in for the, for the first time. Today is the approval. On May 12th, we'll be back to your board with a number of documents for your approval, also regarding the preliminary official statement and purchase agreements and those formal documentation. This is today's approval. We expect the interest rate at this time to be probably around 1% or less, the interest yield that we would be issuing. So generally speaking, it's, it's a good program and it does, it does give us benefit for tax flow, property tax cash flow. Recommend your approval at this time.
Ready for a motion?
Chair.
Yep.
I just want to make a comment. Just received a timely note from the CSAC executive director that CSAC has been working on their trans pool also, and their trans pool this year has doubled from last year. So combined issuance of more than a billion dollars. And there's issues being statewide, but the CSAC's working it for their pool specifically to get credits, secure a letter of credit from National Bank. The purchase of bond insurance has been, become very tough, and they are also lobbying the federal government to guarantee a letter of credit, so tough times.
Yeah, thank you Supervisor Long. That's a good point because CSAC, we've been invited to join the CSAC pool. And that's one of the issues we are always wary of, is that there are a number of less credit-worthy counties in that CSAC pool. So we are, we, that's why we issue our own and rely on our own credit. And your board's diligence through the years, I think, has improved our creditworthiness over the years. And we'll discuss that a little bit, I think, in a week. We'll try to discuss a little bit about credit and why it's important and get a credit rating. We'll report that next week. Our plan is to give you a little bit of information in that regard next week.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Anything else? We're ready for a motion. We have a motion in a second. We're ready to vote. And you're on for item 39 because 38 just passed unanimously.
Thank you, appreciate that. Item 39 is our issuance of certificates of participation, which we have not done since 2003, actually. And this is long-term debt, not to be confused. And we generally go out for a 15- or 20-year period. In this, in this particular case, we will be issuing for a 20-year period for the Ventura County Medical Center clinic, Office Clinic. And we would issue for a 15-year period for the refi, well, for the refinancing of the Fillmore Clinic. And then whatever the remaining life of our, we're refunding also additional outstanding COPs from 1998 and 2001. So those three items comprise roughly $110 million issuance that our plan is to, again, come back to your board on May 12th with the, all the documentation. So your board packet will be about a foot high in that regard. But we will come back on that date for your approval of all the documents. And our plan is to go forward. We will be meeting with the rating agencies the week of the 18th of May and come back and probably issue sometime in later June for these certificates of participation. At this time, the interest rate is not spectacular, but we are running out of, of capacity with our commercial paper program, so we need to refinance the commercial paper. It's still under 5%, but, for the 20-year period, but, but it's not, it's not as good as it was a couple of years ago, but we still think it's a really good interest rate. But regardless, we're asking for your recommendation is to authorize the issuance and then authorize the corresponding expenditures.
Supervisor Zergos.
Mr. Chair, but we can refinance again, too.
We can refinance. Generally, the way they do is they structure these things, so it almost makes sense to refinance later on down the road.
As we progress on that.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we've got a motion in a second. We just need to vote on this item. And item that passes, and item 40.
Appreciate that. My turn again, thank you. Our recommendation is to appoint Ms. Eileen Elizabeth Hill, CPA, to the Tobacco Settlement Finance Committee. And this person comes in as highly recommended by the Chair of the Finance Committee, Dan Goldstein. And so we are recommending our office check with her, and she is willing to participate. Right now, we have both the Chair and the Vice Chair of the Tobacco Finance Committee are terming out this July, this June 30th. So this position will be the only one that we have until we get a couple of new appointments for those positions. In addition to that, we, we do have also three vacancies in the Tobacco Allocation Committee, and, and we have an additional, potential four additional vacancies coming up at the end of this fiscal year. Three, we expect to reappoint for another two-year period, and one is terming out. So we'll have four vacancies out of the 11 for the finance, for the Tobacco Allocation Committee. So anyway, that's just an update. We are recommending Ms. Hill to be on the Finance Committee.
All right, we have a motion by Supervisor Long, seconded by Supervisor Parks, and we're ready to vote.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we are, item 41 has been postponed. Let's try to get 42 in and get our IT people back to work. And that is approval of Novell's Enterprise Collaboration Management application.
All my paperwork's taken down here. Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, Board, Ms. Robinson. Today, we want to discuss a little bit about the extension of the EVC program, the Efficiency Ventura County. It seems like I stand before you again, asking the county to look at the way we do, change the way we do business. And what I, what we really want to talk about in promoting here is collaboration. We'll certainly talk about the tool that we want to look at to use toward that collaboration. But collaboration, I think, is the more important thing to promote here before the board. What we want to provide the county and the agencies and departments is a methodology to collaborate on projects, on brainstorming, on process improvement, on any kind of document sharing, any kind of webinar. So all people can have the ability to have input to certainly the way the county runs their business today. Team meeting and conferencing from the Novell suite, since we are under the master license agreement with Novell, certainly provides that capability. It provides a real-time and recorded collaboration components. It allows staff to engage in video conferencing. It allows users to share desktops, to share slide presentations, certainly to participate in brainstorming whiteboarding capability across the county. What really promotes here is its self-provisioning and self-management of the teaming site itself. So anybody who is a member can create a teaming site, can create teams, can promote collaboration within that team. It really acts as a miniature enterprise content management system that we talked about before. You can share documents, you can do workflow, you can do e-forms within that teaming itself. And of course, if it becomes larger, then you can promote that up to an enterprise content management capability. The Efficiency Ventura County program was a one-time designation approved by the board for 4.5 million. This is still part of those funds that we are looking at providing those funds over a three-year period for Ventura County program for collaboration. We're looking at the first year of generating 500 users, which we've already done as part of our determination in whether this program is going to work. The following year, we're looking at adding another thousand users. And the third year, yet another thousand users. So we're looking at a total of the first three years of 2,500 users to participate in this program. The capability of the, of the Novell program itself has two components. It has a teaming piece that does the sharing of documents, does the workflow, does the e-forms, and then it has a conferencing piece that does the conferencing, the webinars, the WebEx kinds of capability. It also addresses the green portion of, in a smaller than the enterprise content management, the same kinds of focus on reducing paper, reducing ink and those sorts of things. It's more or less more of a soft cop, or soft advantages as it creates more resource hours to do more with less type of a program. So with that, so practical applications, of course, is project management, sharing of documents, report generation. There's a number of agencies that have to collect documents across their agency to roll up into a state report that can be used. Business process improvement, IT services itself uses program to generate its 2009 strategic business plan. Adds to training across, if you have multiple locations across the county, that you can provide training to those agencies through the network. Of course, brainstorming, document sharing, workflow, contact centers, as you move from just being a call center, you can also add contact center capability to that call center. And of course, all the application integration with email and calendaring and desktop and I'll receive enterprise content. So with that, I'll certainly offer any questions that I can offer up.
I had the benefit of hearing this at the IT committee hearing. It's a comment that'll lead to a question, but this, I think for the board members, we ought to recognize that there are some, some times when we've, we've identified that we need to really step up and offer some leadership. Instituting this kind of program is best practices in private industry. It is, we are not, we're not where private industry is in terms of using this kind of technology. And when we're talking about trying to reinvent the way we do things and all, so this is, this is potentially one of those, one of those significant steps. My concern is, it doesn't have any sex appeal as you sit there and talk. I mean, there's just, they're just, you know, even in the room, they're not feeling any pizzazz about this thing. And it's purely a marketing thing, but you know, I don't know whether we need, I mean, you know, there's, there's an IT component that has to be rolled out here, but there's also a motivation, you know, marketing component that also is an essential part to this being successful. Is there something that I'm missing that's going on, you know, out there that we're just not aware of here at the board? Or are we concerned there? What's, what's the status?
Well, our first promotional behind this is going to be April 29th, where we're going to have Technology Day. And Technology Day is going to promote all of the great things that IT and certainly how we're promoting the CEO's opportunity to, how we're creating this, this plan for the county to better work more efficiently. But certainly, there is a marketing side to this. That's something that we have to go out and promote, not only because of the change in the way we do business, but because of the tenure of the people who have been in the county. We have to show really specific examples. Here's our, here's how you could use it. Here's new ideas. Here's the approach that you might want to look at. But absolutely, that's, that's a given.
The efficiency of not moving the molecules, you know, the people to all of these meetings is just enormous if we can do it right. And of course, we don't want change just for the benefit of, you know, kind of fluxing ourselves around in terms of change. But there's so many potential things here. And so if there are things that we need to do at the board level to keep helping make, create the atmosphere so that people are appropriately ready to engage and embrace and move forward with this change, this is an invitation to come back to us because I feel confident, I speak for everybody here, that we want, try to make sure that we push this. Supervisor Foy.
I think you make a good point about the sex appeal. Because I mean, human nature is, if nothing in it from me, I don't really have a lot of desire to do it. So what is it that's really going to stimulate the person to want to do this? What are they going to get out of it?
Well, I think from a simulation point, and it's going to take all of us as leaders, certainly to promote this, is, is, is the output, the direct output of what becomes of collaborating. Typically, people don't want to do that. They're, they're prone to take care of their own little areas and drive and get recognition for that work that they've done. So moving into a team environment versus an individual contributor is a major culture shift for, for the county. And I think it's us as leaders to promote that, it's sort of the greater good for the county than the recognition of individual contributors. Not that we don't want to do that, but certainly that as we work together as a team more cohesively, we're going to achieve more over time. And that needs to be the message.
So is there something we can draw on? I mean, is their, is their job going to be easier? They're going to be improved? They're going to be better what they're going to do? I'm going to look better to the world? They're going to pay me more to do it? I mean, what is it that?
Well, it's all the above, except paying you more.
Well, someday maybe I'll pay you more.
But certainly, there's, there's really efficiencies to be gained here, which is why it falls under the efficiency program. When people get used to using this type of tool and environment and they're able to do and spread the word across the county versus trying to get the county to come in to meet and decide on things, it becomes very worthwhile doing. Until you actually get your hands on it and use it, you know, it isn't a sex appeal. It isn't a cool thing to do. But once you get your hands on it and use it, you'll see that, well, this is really a great thing to do. And as they use it more and more, then it's going to grow and grow and grow. But initially, it's going to be us as leaders to promote collaboration before it really grabs a hold of the county.
Okay, all righty. We're ready for a motion on this item. Let's see, it's the motioner of the day. There we go. We're ready to vote. Oh, we need a second? A second? All right, yes. There you go. We're ready to vote.
I'm, I'm, I'm not sold yet. So I'm abstaining, and I, I look forward to seeing the results, but I feel like I need more information on this at this time.
Okay, and I'm more willing to spend that time with you.
Okay. That item passes four to one with one abstention, and we thank you very much. We're now ready for our.
Thank you.
9:45 time certain. And Supervisor Zergos is going to kick us off. We have a series of resolutions we're going to be presenting over the next 40 minutes. And to start us off, Supervisor Zergos on Victims' Rights Week.
Well, thank you so much, and I'd like to invite Mike Schwartz, Special Assistant District Attorney, and Catherine Duggan up to the, and I'm going to read this. And also, I think our DA is here, too. And I'd like to read this, and I'll go down real quick. It says, "More than 33 million Americans are victims of crime each year, whereas victims may suffer emotional, physical, psychological, and financial harm as a result of crime. Whereas a just society acknowledges crimes, impacts, and individuals, families, and communities by ensuring that rights, resources, and services are available to help rebuild lives. Whereas although our nation has steadily expanded rights, protection, and services for victims of crime, too many victims are not able to realize a hope and promise of this gains. Whereas observing victims' rights and treating victims with dignity and respect serves the public interest by engaging victims and justice system, inspiring respect for public authorities, and promoting confidence and public safety. Whereas National Crimes Week provides an opportunity for us to strive to reach goals of justice for all by ensuring that all victims are afforded their legal rights and provided with assistance as they face the financial, physical, psychological impacts of crime. Whereas Ventura County has demonstrated its caring and compassion of victims' crime and from individuals who provide support to victims in need, to the community, collaboration, results, and comprehensive services in victims of crime. Now therefore resolved, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors does hereby proclaim April 26th and May 2nd, 2009, as Crime Victims' Rights Week in Ventura County. County of Ventura honors crime victims and those who serve those during this week and throughout the year." And I'll present this to you.
Thank you. Good morning, members of the board and Ms. Robinson. The commission of a crime, excuse me, the commission of a crime may last only seconds. That under the influence driver that speeds through a red light and crashes into an oncoming car on passenger's side, the impact of that crash could last a lifetime for the occupants of that car. They may be gravely injured, they may even be killed in that accident. So it's interesting that, that the crime itself is just over very quickly, but the impact of the crime for the victim can really last for years and years, and often for the rest of their life. Since its establishment in 1981, National Crime Victims' Rights Week has been a time of nationwide remembrance, reflection, and recommitment. It is a time to raise awareness of the harsh impact of crime and a time to remember victims of crime and those who serve them. This year, the district. This year, the District Attorney's Office is cosponsoring our annual commemoration of National Crime Victims Rights Week with the Coalition to End Family Violence. And with me this morning is Laura Gonzalez from the Coalition. And also with Interface Children and Family Services. And I think Nicole Gonzalez is here from Interface. Nicole? This year, we'll have a little bit shorter of a ceremony than we've had in, in prior years, but after the ceremony, we're going to have a march. We're going to march around the Government Center. We hope you'll participate. Free T-shirts. And after lunch, or after the march, the Coalition and Interface along with El Consilio and the Coca-Cola Bottling Company will provide lunch. So we're looking forward to that event and it's an opportunity for us again to just raise awareness about the victims of the crime. We spend so much of our time and resources in punishing the criminals and often it's easy to forget that there are victims out there and long after the case is over, the victims continue to struggle with the trauma and loss that they have experienced as a result of that crime. This week, this year is an opportunity for us to remember them and to recommit ourselves. We have some wonderful people in this county who work with crime victims, advocates at the Coalition, at Interface, and at the District Attorney's Office and other agencies. Some of them are here today. And if it's all right, I'd like to take a moment and just acknowledge them. So maybe the advocates from the District Attorney's Office, if you could stand up. Thank you. We also have representatives here from Public Nursing. As well as the Partnership for Safe Families. And then of course, staff from the Coalition and Interface.
Once again, my name is Laura Gonzalez. I'm the, the new Executive Director of the Coalition to End Family Violence. And I wanted to say that we, myself and the staff are committed to provide effective services and cross-training to make sure that each victim in Ventura County is provided with effective services. So I thank you very much.
Thank you. Supervisor Zaragoza, now we have our next resolution is Supervisor Long about Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Yes, thank you. And all things are connected. I invite Laura Gonzalez to come back up to the, to the podium. Executive Director of the Coalition to End Family Violence to receive the resolution on behalf of the board proclaiming April 2009 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Thank you. Sexual assault is an intolerable violent crime with public health implications for every person in our county as a victim survivor or as a family member, significant other, neighbor, coworker, or a victim survivor. And there's no one-person organization, agency, or community that can eliminate sexual assault on their own. It really does take all of us working together to educate our citizens as to what can be done to prevent sexual assault, support our victim survivors and their significant others, and increase support for agencies providing services. The Coalition to End Family Violence has led the way for over, for many years in providing a 24-hour hotline service, responding to emergency calls, supporting and comforting those who have been impacted by sexual assault, and to help those who have been impacted to chart their own course for healing. It is through education that the Coalition to End Family Violence has been able to engage in conversation with the community to support crucial counseling and to address the needs of both victims and, and families who are impacted by this intolerable violent crime. So I, the Coalition to End Family Violence is an important example of how collaborative relationships, as we just saw in the prior presentation, the Coalition has always worked collaboratively throughout the county and, and many areas of family violence intervention and prevention. And to be able to speak out to find solutions that will help us to end sexual violence. So the Coalition requests a public support and assistance as it continues to, to bring real hope for freeing Ventura County from the tragedy of sexual violence and to create a future where all women, men, and children can live free from violence and exploitation. So it's my pleasure to step down to present this to you, recognizing April 2009 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in our county. And please.
I'd like to introduce to you Caroline Pritchettell, who is our Rape Crisis Program Coordinator, who has really led the organization in providing effective services to all sexual assault victims and providing education throughout the year.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Long and all of the board for recognizing April as Sexual Assault Month. The Coalition to End Family Violence continues to provide strong services in all of Ventura County to victims and their families to help heal. We recognize the need for not only education and intervention, but also prevention methods. And it is our goal to work with all of the community in order to help these victims with a range of services. And with leadership and commitment, we can work together to create short and long-term problems for sexual violence.
Thank you. Thank you.
John, do you have this copy? Did you give them this or do you have this? Could you give me this? Thanks. I just want to check it. Thank you very much Supervisor Long for that. And we're now at our 10 o'clock time certain item. And it's a, a pleasure for me to recognize the people are doing great work on child abuse prevention here in Ventura County as we proclaim April 2009 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we have here Elaine Martinez Curry from Human Services, if you'd come down. And Public Health Nurse Chair of the Child Abuse Prevention, and I'm having trouble reading the name, and that's Salia Dobrowski. Okay, great. And Jennifer, I won't pronounce that name right. Footboy?
Footboy.
Footboy, all right. Mandated Reporter Training and Outreach Specialist here to receive this award. But there are many people, I would point out, that work on child abuse in Ventura County. I see the representatives, our Sheriff Department out there. It spans many agencies that have to do something. And before I talk about this, just the other day, I was reading that in one particular jail population, two-thirds of the people in the jail had been abused as children. And, you know, if, if we could get on top of this problem and at least if you catch it early, you may be able to break that cycle. So this is a resolution of the Board of Supervisors proclaiming April 2009 as Child Abuse Prevention Month. "April is Child Abuse Prevention Month, a time to raise awareness about child abuse and neglect, encouraging individuals and communities to keep children safe, provide support to families to stay together, and to raise children and youth to be happy, secure, and stable adults." That's a big mouthful right there when you think about it. If you just get that done, I think everybody that's tried to parent would, would appreciate that. Child abuse and neglect is a serious community issue affecting the growth and development of children across all ethnic and socioeconomic groups. Child abuse and neglect is often passed through generations. Early detection, intervention, and treatment are critical to ending the cycle of abuse and maintaining the integrity of the family. This month provides an opportunity to acknowledge youth and elderly care education programs and their dedicated staff and to raise the awareness of the community, employers, elected officials, of the need to improve the quality, availability, and accessibility of such programs. May we remember to listen and watch the children around us, to have patience and allow them the opportunity to enjoy the journey of childhood. And then a special recognition on the part of the board commends the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities of Ventura County, the Designated Child Abuse Prevention Council, Ventura County Behavioral Health Department, Ventura County Human Services Agency, Ventura County Public Health, Ventura County Law Enforcement Agencies, and the law enforcement agencies in the cities in Ventura County, and all the partnering members of the outstanding volunteers for the fine work they do on behalf of the children and promoting a community for safe, healthy, and peaceful families and children. And could you please make some comments to us as I bring this resolution down to you?
Good morning. My name's Elaine Martinez Curry, and I'm the Manager of the Partnership for Safe Families and Communities, the Designated Child Abuse Council. We'd like to thank the board for your continued support and your acknowledgement throughout the years of the partnership. We are here in recognition as April is Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month. Our mission is to promote communities, a community committed to safe, healthy, and peaceful families. The partnership has over 20 years of violence prevention in Ventura County. And the partnership is an organization where consisted of many of the agencies that Supervisor Bennett talked about, law enforcement, public health, mental health, behavioral health, as well as faith and justice, and many professionals from the business. We serve as a major collaborating and coordinating network, doing educational outreach and awareness and resource in helping children and families in all stages of prevention, intervention, and treatment of abuse across the lifespan as well. In 2002, we were honored to be designated as the Child Abuse Prevention Council of Ventura County by the board, and we appreciate that. We do wear, in honor of child abuse prevention and neglect, we wear a blue ribbon in honor of that. And we have one for each one of you, along with a packet of information about the partnership and a brochure on child abuse and a card on mandated reporting as well. I'd like to take a moment just to recognize some of our committee members. We do a lot of different work throughout the county, and we do have some of our chairs and committee members here. We have Jennifer Frank is our Board Vice Chair. Susan Becker with Safe Harbor is the Chair of our Sexual Abuse Prevention Committee as well. We have Nicole Gonzalez with Interface, and she is the Chair, co-chair actually, of our Domestic Violence Committee. And of course, Jenny Footboy, she's our mandated reporter training specialist. And many of the other constituents and members that we have already out in the audience that have been introduced, Public Health, Law Enforcement, a lot of the county agencies, the Human Service Agency. And with that, I want to actually present next to you Salida Dobrowski from Public Health, and she will talk about what our Child Abuse and Neglect Education Awareness Committee is doing in prevention of child abuse.
Thank you. Good morning. Our mission with the Child Abuse and Neglect Education Committee is to promote community awareness of the abuse and neglect of children and the resources available for prevention, intervention, and treatment. So as a committee, we are acknowledging Child Abuse Prevention Month by participating in and sponsoring several activities that are going on for the month of April. Some of these activities include an informational presentation that we did to the entire partnership on child abuse prevention and the programs that are out in our community. We will also be represented at Kids Day at the Capitol, which is coming up later this month, as well as the National Crime Victims Week. The partnership also supports many programs dedicated to child abuse and neglect prevention. One of those is the Public Health Child Abuse Prevention Program. And we have our five public health nurses sitting back. They've already stood at once, but I'm going to have them stand again. And we also have the mandated reporter training as well, which goes out there and teaches the community how to, how to be a mandated reporter, what it is to be a mandated reporter, so that everyone in the community is aware of what to look for and how to report potential abuse or neglects. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. and Child Abuse Prevention Month, and all those often can lead to a call for 911 service. And the child abuse pamphlet, I think is worth noting, when you see abusive behavior in the public, remember that most parents love their kids, sympathize with the parent. Looks like you're having a rough time. Don't criticize. It can make things worse. Offer to help in small ways. Carry the groceries or help with other children. Talk to the child if you can. It looks like you are tired. Find something positive to say about the child. Remember that humor can help diffuse the situation. Kids can be a handful. And take action if necessary for physical safety of the child. Alert someone nearby or call 911. And when we do call 911, we want to make sure that we have excellent folks there that can respond and we have the equipment to do it with. And so this resolution recognizes individuals in our dispatchers unit. And I'd like to call, we have the 2009 Dispatcher of the Year, Mark Stinson here, I believe. Thank you, Mark. As well as Supervisor Claudia Tolmi, Training Manager Michelle Bayless, Assistant Manager Erin Brokis, Communications Manager Anita Kronback, and maybe Dispatcher Trainer Cheryl Manoli. So if you'd like to come up, I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution and I'll come down and present it. It's a resolution of the Board of Supervisors of Ventura County proclaiming April 12 through 18th, 2009, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. "Whereas emergencies can occur at any time and the prompt response of emergency services is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property of citizens throughout our nation. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact that citizens have with emergency services, and these highly trained professionals are depended upon to gather the accurate information that is crucial in ensuring the safety of our citizens and emergency personnel. Whereas each year, the public safety dispatchers and supervisors at the Ventura County Sheriff's Department Communication Center handle more than 375,000 telephone calls." And that's in one year. "Including 69,489 111 calls resulting in more than 106,000 law enforcement responses in 2008. And our public safety dispatchers manage each call with the highest level of service. And whereas the highly trained public safety dispatchers and the supervisors of the Ventura County Sheriff's Department Communication Center have contributed substantially to the safety of our citizens and deputies by obtaining detailed information, making critical decisions, and quickly dispatching aid in times of emergency, often making the difference between life and death. Whereas the President and Congress of the United States has established the Second Week of April as National Telecommunications Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors is pleased to proclaim April 12 through 18th, 2009, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, expressing the appreciation of all citizens for the diligent service provided by our public safety dispatchers and supervisors. And the board commends these professionals for their compassion, understanding, and dedication. Be it further resolved that the Board of Supervisors congratulates Mark Stinson on being selected by his peers and supervisors as the 2009 Dispatcher of the Year." And I see we also have Sheriff Brooks in the audience and UnderSheriff husband and... Captain Prentice? Am I close? If you'd like to come up to him, I'll come down and present this.
Good morning, board. Ms. Robinson. My name is Mark Stinson. I've been with the Ventura County Sheriff's Department for about seven years now. I work with a great group of individuals, most dedicated, caring people you probably will ever meet. I am very proud to be their representative this year for our department, and I want to thank you for passing this resolution.
Thank you so much. And congratulations. And thank you for your hard work. And I'll present this to you and we'll get a photo.
Okay, I'll take two. One, two, three. One, two, three. Good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And to keep our resolutions rolling here, I had this thought, you know, we don't have very much money this year, but we have the ability to recognize great work, you know, as we go forward. This is a resolution honoring United Blood Services for 60 years saving lives in Ventura County. And we have Scott Edwards, the Director of Recruitment, Susan Nguyen, Director of the Ventura Center, Trudy Cook, Supervisor of Telerecruitment, and Holly Nash, Donor Recruitment Manager. And could you all come down, please? And I'll read this resolution. Great organization, United Blood Services, kind of quietly unheralded out there, but doing great work. This is, "Our Community Blood Bank, now known as United Blood Services, was formed 60 years ago in 1949 to help save lives in Ventura County." And when you think about it, that was right after World War II, and there was that real sense of community, coming together and trying to do those things we needed to do to build America. Every day in Ventura County, blood is needed at local hospitals to care for patients due to illness or trauma. United Blood Services, a community not-for-profit, is our county's sole provider of blood to Ventura County hospitals. Think about that, the only provider of blood in Ventura County. Thousands of Ventura County citizens regularly donate blood with United Blood Services, and there is a need for additional, I'm going to repeat this for all of the healthy county employees out here, there is, there is a need for additional healthy volunteers. Young would be preferred, I shouldn't say preferred, but just because they'll donate for 70 more years, right? Young and old, volunteer donors, to donate three times a year, joining the ranks of those who already give of themselves so generously. With the support of caring donors and a superb medical community, United Blood Services ensures there's blood available in Ventura County when it's needed. United Blood Services is celebrating this diamond anniversary by opening a new blood center at 2223 Eastman Avenue in Ventura. And the community is invited to a public celebration of the new center on Tuesday, April 16. So we're happy to present this resolution to you, and we'd like you to take this opportunity to make any other additional pitches that you can to our employees that are listening.
We'd like to thank the Board this morning for your time and for your recognition of our vital role that we play in the community healthcare system. We are very privileged to partner with our local hospitals to provide life-saving blood transfusions to patients in need every day. We couldn't do this without the support and dedication of our volunteer blood donors. We are very much indebted to them, and thank you very much. Oh, I have one more thing. We are having our 60th anniversary celebration, and we would like to invite every one of you to please attend. It will be Thursday, I think it's a Tuesday in the notes there, but it's Thursday, beginning at 9:00 a.m. with a ribbon cutting. So we'd be very privileged to have all of you there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot going on. Well, we've got something a little different that's not quite as involved with the human needs, but a few of these things today, like Supervisor Parker was talking about, boy, it's kind of a reflection of our society that we don't like to see. But in this one, though, this is interesting, we've had a disaster back in 2005, and then our Public Works performs a great job in doing what they do, and they get an award for it. So let me talk about this. It's a presentation of the American Public Works Association, award for Outstanding Disaster Repair Project. And each year, the American Public Works Association Ventura County Chapter recognized outstanding public work project within Ventura County with the Project of the Year awards. Projects eligible are defined by physical structures and facilities that are developed, owned, and maintained by public agencies to house government functions, provide water power, waste disposal, transportation. Well, there are six different categories, and this one is the Disaster, Emergency, Construction, Repair. And the recipient of 2008 award, Disaster, Emergency, Construction, Repair, the Ventura County Transportation Department, for the Grimes Canyon Bridge, Bridge Number 226, from the storm that happened in January of 2005. So let me introduce Lori.
Thank you. Thank you very much for having us here. Well, you've said everything I was going to say.
Oh, okay.
No, you've got everything that I've written down. So I'm the Vice President this year of the Ventura County Chapter of American Public Works, and it's my honor to be here to present this award honoring the county for selection of the Project of the Year in one of the half a dozen categories that we have. As you've mentioned, it's for emergency repair of the Grimes Canyon Road Bridge 226. So here we have our plaque, and I think Glenn has a PowerPoint here to show you the before, the after, and the during the repair.
Yes, I have a few, basically before and after. What you're looking at is the bridge that we completed last year in 2008. We can move it along. In 2000, next slide, please. This is what we're looking at, January 10, 2005, of the bridge that was originally built in 1954. Next slide, please. Here you see the bridge in 1971. You think about, this is after the 69 floods, and yet the channel actually aggraded about two feet. But in 2005, we lost about 10 feet. And those piers are 20 foot long, and about 13 feet of them are out of the ground. Next slide, please. And here we have four before and after pictures. Here, we're looking downstream. You can see concrete or riprap at the upper left that's been undermined, and then the new bridge on the bottom. Next slide, please. Here's a couple of views of the roadway here looking west. You can see how the roadway was undermined on both sides and collapsed. I'd like to give credit to road maintenance and the Highway Patrol for watching areas like this and closing them before anyone drove over them. Next slide, please. Here's a view from the other side. And then the final picture is the best one we have, the before and after looking upstream of your new Grimes Bridge 226.
Looks great. Congratulations.
Good work. Nice tie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you.
Congratulations on the award. I travel that road going over to Fillmore and Piru, so I watch that bridge. It's good work.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, Supervisor Foye. I think it's very helpful. People wonder, what are they getting for their tax dollars? And that's a classic example. All right, we are at item 23, and that's the second hearing on the Memorandum of Agreement with the Deputy Sheriff, Mr. Nicole.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, this is the second reading and the adoption of the Memorandum of Agreement between the County of Ventura and the Ventura County Deputy Sheriff's Association. As you are aware from our first reading, this is a two-year agreement that provides for compensation increases in the first year of 1.5%, a compensation increase in the second year of 1%. There's an additional tenth of a percent that's being spent on our pilot bilingual program. Be happy to answer any other questions you have regarding this two-year agreement.
Thank you very much. We're ready for a...
Go ahead, move approval and recognize Marty Rouse, not Captain Prentis. Sorry about that. I'll get my glasses on.
All righty. We're ready to vote. Supervisor Zaragoza is hustling back here. I slowed my vote down, John, so you got a second. And that motion passes unanimously. We're now here, Mr. Nicole, for item 24, Ventura County Firefighters.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we once again have a two-year agreement with the second largest of our safety units. It's the Ventura County Professional Firefighters Association. It makes provision for compensation in the first year of a total of 1.5%, and in the second year for 1%. In the case of both units, they understood the issues we were facing, and we have managed to secure a two-year agreement that provides us both with some measure of stability during this difficult time.
Moved and seconded. We're ready for a vote. That passes. Item 25, Criminal Justice Attorneys Association.
These are the final two of those that were in this last sequence with regards to the budget, other than those that have direct state or federal program such as IHSS. This is the second hearing for the Criminal Justice Attorneys Association. It is a one-year agreement, and this agreement provides for the 1.5% in total compensation spread between the salaries at 1.28 and .22 being paid into their flexible credit allowance.
We're ready for a motion. Moved and seconded, and we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously, and specialized peace officers.
The Glassford, as I've mentioned before, is certainly not the least of these associations. These are the people who represent the welfare fraud investigators and the medical examiners, investigators. This unit receives the same one-year package at a total compensation value of 1.5%. It is eight tenths of a percent in salary and seven tenths of a percent in the increase in their flexible credit allowance for medical care.
Ready for a motion? And second, we're ready to vote. Mr. Nicole, we hope we don't see you for a while.
Understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We're, item 27, we have a, Ms. Robinson has left, and our Assistant CEO has stepped in, Mr. Carroll, welcome aboard. And do you have anything for item 27?
Unfortunately, Chair Bennett, you'll be seeing probably way more of me in the future than you probably want to see.
Nicole's gone, Dursley's back.
That's right. Your Board, Supervisor Long mentioned this morning about going out and voting. Your Board was interested in what the impacts, or try to, for our office to try to define what those impacts of the voting, the passage of all the different propositions would have on our budget. Next week, our plan is to come back to your Board with a number of items, including our progress as far as the target budgets, laying out kind of next year's preliminary, preliminary budget at that point in time. Our plan also is to incorporate some time in the month of May for departments to come and make specific presentations to your Board regarding the impacts of their target budgets and their budgets, and the operational impacts from those targets. Here's what we're looking at. From the state budget, as you recall, a number of items coming down to the state, including the, I believe, six propositions. The personal income tax they have, they've increased it by .25% in each tax bracket. They were going to increase it, they were going to decrease it if they got $10 billion of what they call stimulus, the trigger amount. They did not get the $10 billion, so all of the people will see a .25% increase in their tax bracket for personal income tax. The special election, that's Proposition 1, would, 1A, would be, extend that for two years. The vehicle license fee, the rate was increased from .65 to 1.15. As you note there, is allocated among those different funds and different programs, and is effective until July of 2011, and Proposition, if Proposition 1A passes, that goes another two years. Sales and use tax increased by 1%. We've already seen that. If you've bought anything, you've seen a 1% increase in your sales tax, begin in April 1st and ends July 1, 2011. Special election, Prop 1A would add another year. Trigger cuts.
Let me ask you, because of the 1A and all that, it has no effect on us for the next couple of years to come, because we're already into that. It's extension of all the...
That's correct.
So it doesn't affect our budget, it doesn't take anything away from us or do anything.
Right, and I'll give a little bit of explanation of Prop 1A. And the legislative analysts had a difficult time trying to determine the fiscal impact. So, you know, they're a lot more in tune with the state than we are as far as those fiscal impacts, so we had an even more difficult time trying to determine what Prop 1A meant. Except for, you're right, they do, primarily it extends those taxes and puts all these caps, and the caps is where it gets confusing for the state. The trigger cuts, these were the items we did not, we being the state of California, did not meet the $10 billion of offset for the state general fund. So these trigger impacts, the Medi-Cal eliminates the optional benefits of Medi-Cal. It eliminates 10% reduction in safety net care pool that has a direct impact on ours. Fortunately for our, for our net, safety net pool, we do have some FMAP to help offset some of that reduction. CalWorks reduces, this is a direct recipient grant for CalWorks participants, reducing that by 4%. SSISSP reduces, again, a recipient grant by 2.3%. And the, I should say IHSS. IHSS, that caps the share of wages at 9.50 an hour plus 60 cents an hour for health benefits. That's exactly what we are paying currently. So it will, that particular issue, these trigger cuts will not have an impact on our IHSS. There are some counties throughout the state are paying 12, 13, 14 dollars an hour for IHSS. And if they don't have language in their bargaining agreements where they can reduce that amount, they're going to be significant amounts that they're going to have to pay. They'll end up having to pay roughly, based on the FMAP, generally speaking, they would have to pay half, 50%, anything over that $9.50 an hour. We're fortunately at the $9.50 an hour, so our share continues to be the 17.5% roughly speaking, with the FMAP transfer and that stuff. It's a little bit, little bit lower than that amount going forward. Prop 1A, this is the spending cap rainy day fund. The top items, it kind of explain, explain what it means. It really does extend several tax increases by one or two years. That's what we identified in those areas. But in addition to that, to get those one or two-year increases, all of these 3% revenues go into rainy day fund, and they base it on the 10 prior years of revenue. And like I said, the LAO is certain, uncertain about its fiscal impact. It could increase revenues, it could increase the payments to education, may restrict revenues, could smooth state fending, could change types of spending. They're not really sure at this time. And I think locally, we're not seeing, we won't see a significant impact from Prop 1A, at least in the current or near future. That's our anticipated impact on Prop 1A. 1B, this is a men's constitution related to Prop 98. Again, it's linked back to the Proposition 1A. If Prop 1A or Prop 1B do not pass, then, then there's no effect on the current funding of Prop 98 and how the state funds Prop 98. It would revert back to its current model. So if it doesn't pass, there's no change. If it does pass, then there's a reallocation among how the, how the school gets their money. It could trickle down to us depending on the allocations and how they're allocating the dollars relative to the school and how it comes back down to the county. We're not anticipating significant impacts next year or the year after regardless. Most of these items, you'll see that if it passes, it's one, it'll hit us one way. If it, if it doesn't pass, it'll hit us a different way, but generally they'll, we'll still feel some impact. Lottery modernization, this is, they're borrowing future lottery revenues. This is, I believe, they're, they're relying on $5 billion of lottery, of this borrowing to plug a gap in next year's budget. So you see the failure, the failure, the last line, the failure could add a potential $5 billion shortfall requiring additional program cuts or additional new revenue sources. We don't, we can't identify what those are going to be, but generally speaking, they come back down to the county in the cuts in the form of Health and Human Services programs. That's what we generally see.
I didn't, I guess in our county, we're not as creative as the state. Calling borrowing lottery modernization, you haven't come to us and said we're going to modernize something by borrowing.
That's right. Well, yeah, this is, your Board has a firm policy against borrowing for operational, operational costs, and this is exactly what the state is doing. They're borrowing from future, future revenues to plug a current gap. If they don't get this money, they would expect a $5 billion hole in next year's budget. And that, generally speaking, that will trickle down to the county in the form of decrease, decreased revenues for Health and Human Services program would be our best guess. We don't have the, we don't have specifics because the state has not been specific as far as how they're going to be cutting programs. Prop 1D is the Prop 10 modification, first five modification. It again redirects $340 million of unspent revenues in Prop 10, first five, and it redirects future revenues, 260... It again redirects $340 million of unspent revenues in, in Prop, Prop 10, first five, and it redirects future revenues, $268 million annually, begins in 2009, 10 through 2013, 14. They would be used to offset general fund costs. So, if they don't, if this does not pass, we would see the impact of 340 million, $268 million ongoing, $608 million for 9, 10, another $608 million budget hole for the state in next year's budget if this proposition does not pass. However, if this proposition does pass, we would see an estimated $23 million diverted from our local commission to the state over the next five-year period. Those are local revenues coming down in, in the form of Prop 5, Prop 10, first five revenues, $1.4 million from one-time diversion in 9, 10, and it could, could increase local costs for programs currently funded by local five programs. So that's our threat as far as if it doesn't pass, excuse me, if it does pass. So we have a threat if it does pass or it doesn't pass locally. This is, you know, from our standpoint, we're going to see it either way, and it's, and it's...
And I just want to point out, it's $608 million to the state, which we don't know what, if any of that comes back to us, it's $23 million definitely out of our county, out of our first five funds for the kids zero to five.
Because that $608 goes into the general fund of the state.
That's correct. That's correct. So we know that these are the best estimates we, we got from our first five group, and, and they are very aware of what's going on, and they are concerned, obviously. And it goes over that, that five-year period after that point in time. They expect to lose up to 65 percent of their revenue, because even though the number is flat at, at $268 million a year, they expect their overall revenues to go down, so that flat amount that will be taken away every year will be an increasing percentage of their overall revenue. So they're expecting, they said, I believe the state's impression was going to be 50 percent of the revenues, they expect it to work its way up to almost 65 percent of the revenues. They would expect, just because there was another federal excise tax, I think a dollar and a half per tax, per PAC is going in, into effect, they would expect that to have a 15 percent impact. So there's a lot of impacts as far as tobacco, anything related to tobacco funding, and this clearly would, would affect locally. Mental health modification, Prop 63, it redirects $226 million, $227 million in EPS, early prevention, early periodic...
Early prevention.
Early, early prevention and something treatment. I forget what this stands for, but it's another mental, it's a behavioral health program. It redirects $234 million in 10, 11. Could potentially increase other costs depending on the impact of the reduction of Prop 63 programs. So again, this comes back, it could potentially decrease federal match funding, and the failure result, another state budget gap of revenues assumed to be redirected. In other words, the state is going to redirect $226 million of Prop 63 money to their general fund if it passes, if it does, and they'll, therefore, it'll be taking away from our local control over some of those dollars. Conversely, if it doesn't pass, they'll have a $227 million budget hole. So regardless, it will come, again, this, this one is just very similar to the, to the other ones, that it'll come back down to the county regardless. It will, we will feel some impact of the passing of Prop 63 or the non-passing of Prop 63. I guess it depends on what your feeling of how the state can control these monies and whether or not we're better off having it in the state general fund or in local coffers. The legislative pay really doesn't have any impact on us in the open primary. You, you probably have more knowledge and could give a better opinion on that than our office. Would not have any specific impact on our budget in, in the out years. And that's all I have today. Like I said, next week, we'll get into a little bit more about our county budget and where we're going and how we plan on getting there. If you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them. I think the, in a nutshell, the impacts are not going to be positive regardless of what happens at, through the, through the ballot initiative process.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dursley. We'll see you next week. We, looks like we could get all of our agenda items done. I know we've got, oh, we need to receive and file?
Second.
All right, great. All righty.
Thank you.
And, but I think we can knock out these other items. Forty-three, recommendation of Supervisor Park, I'm sorry, thank you very much. You can tell I'm ready. Do you devote? All right, that was our motion, receive and file. Now Supervisor Parks, you're on for...
I would move that we support legislation to enact Senate Bill 346. This is regarding hazardous materials. Turns out, whenever we push on our brakes in our car, we release a debris which involves a copper that then has to be cleaned out of our watersheds as part of the regional board's requirement on TMDLs. Brake pad manufacturers support this, and I would ask that you do too. That's my motion.
Moved and seconded, we're ready to vote.
I looked up the brake pad partnerships to see who's on that council, and it really does have good representation of industry and others.
Yeah, and there are a lot of toxics in addition to copper, like asbestos and mercury and things that come off brake pads, so I look forward to getting better material for that.
And that motion passes, and then item forty-four, we're going to do at 1:30. Item forty-five, Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. Recommendation to appoint Denise Brown to the Alcohol Drug Board.
We're ready to vote. Item forty-six, it's my item, it's a recommendation to adopt the modifications in the Ojai Valley MAC. These modifications will, if you look at the agendas for the last 15 years, that's exactly what they've been focused on, and so it'd be consistent with what they've done. It's also consistent with the MACs in Santa Rosa Valley and in Oak Park in terms of the supervisor ultimately reviewing and approving the agenda. So with that, move the recommended modifications.
I would just comment, you might have noticed in the paper, I'm considering actually starting a third MAP, MAC, just because they are wonderful abilities for the community to interface with the member of the Board of Supervisors and help us make better decisions up here, so I definitely support this motion, and I guess it puts it in line with the other MACs.
That motion passes. We're at item forty-seven, Sheriff's Department, charging United Water Conservation District overtime rates.
Good morning. Dennis Carpenter, Chief Deputy Sheriff's Department. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Carroll, wish to point out, I was with Mr. Zaragoza last night at the Knights of Columbus event, and when all those police officers ran out of the room chasing the bad guy, I stayed there to protect you, sir.
Thank you.
I was successful in that, as you can see.
I'm here.
I'll testify to that. I'm here to, item forty-seven, I'm going to, per your, request your approval for, to charge United Water Conservation District overtime rates for the Sheriff's Department's security we provide at Lake Piru. This will greatly benefit us as we've had several disturbances out there in years passed on these holiday weekends, and so match required is a little over $8,000 revenue.
All right, great.
Move the recommended action?
It's moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. And that passes. Item forty-eight, Mr. Carpenter, you can handle that also.
Yes, item forty-eight, request you approve an agreement between the United States Customs Service and the Sheriff's Department, so we can bill overtime cost to any ICE-related investigations that the gang units participating, any RICO investigations or such, and that's a maximum of about $48,000 revenue for us.
We're ready for a motion?
Just a question, this has been traditionally what in prior years?
This has not been, it's not had, we've not had an agreement with him in prior years, no, this is brand new.
No.
Okay, well, good.
No agreement. We're, it's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote.
Two good items, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Carpenter.
Thank you for the protection.
And item forty-nine, and that's Ventura County Home Support of Public Authority.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name's Robert Jenkins, I'm the Director of the Public Authority, and the item before you this morning is to approve for the IHSS Public Authority Advisory Committee our new nominees and to reapprove for a couple of those. We are asking for approval for Loretta Jackson, Jean Adams, Susan Escalante, Diana Davis, and Linda Catherine Lee, and to reappoint Ms. Ethel Wilson and Sylvia Preston.
Great, thank you. It's moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. Motion passes, and we need a motion to receive the correspondence agenda. Move to receive and file, and we're ready to vote, and we're going to have eight minutes before our Air Pollution Control District. I'm sure we can get all of our closed session items done then, because, yeah, right, we're going to take a break, then we'll go to Air Pollution Control, then we'll go to closed session, then we'll come back out for our 1:30. Did I say that all properly? Great, thank you. Okay, we're ready? Okay, I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Welcome everybody here for this afternoon. We have two items that we need to hear this afternoon. We have a time-certain 1:30 item, and then in item forty-four, we moved to 1:30. So we'll do the first originally scheduled 1:30 item, and that is the public hearing notice for the approval and conveyance of the Camarillo Regional Recreation Area. And staff?
Used to be in here in the morning, this afternoon's going to throw me off, off my game a little. Good afternoon, board members, Chairman Bennett, Matt Carroll. I'm here today to ask the board to find that Camarillo Regional Park is not required for county use, has park prop, non-park property. Approve the conveyance of the subject property to the California State University, Channel Islands, and to adopt the attached resolution. Also to approve and authorize the Director of General Services to execute the grants and deeds in Exhibit 2. Today, we have Dr. Dick Rush, who's the President of Channel Islands University here, and Peter Brand from Coastal Conservancy, who is also here to speak. Little bit of information on this transfer is, that's significant, is the transfer of this property doesn't change the use of the property, which is the most significant piece of this. This property is controlled by the federal government. It was transferred to us through a competitive bidding pro, or competitive process when we first got the first chunk of property, and the second chunk, we paid for using state grant money, and the third piece of the property, we got through using O&M money out of the enterprise fund, which is operating engineers parcel. But the federal government has overriding authority over this property currently, and will still have the overriding authority once the transfer happens, even though it is being transferred to the state. That's important because the POU, or the use for this property that the university drafted, which is one of your exhibits, cannot be changed or modified without the approval of the feds. It has to go back to NPS for any additions, modifications to that POU, which is... modifications to that POU, which is important because that POU was approved by the federal government for authorized uses within that park facility. So I think those are some key elements with this transfer. The public will not lose anything that they currently have. In most cases, they will gain a better property because current county parks department cannot facilitate the needs of that facility to the level it needs to be maintained.
Thank you. That's it? I was waiting for big changes.
Well, I do when we want to look at the property. There's the property itself. The area, I'm going to use mine because it's easier to use. The big areas of concern are this area right here, this area, and this area, which are wetlands area. The map is in your packet. Those three areas are wetlands that surround the main section of the park that's flatland, which is in here. That's also where the flyers are currently located. Actually, they're located right about there. The three different colors that are up there are the three different parcel areas. That horseshoe section up here is also a protected area. That is not part of the park transfer. That is actually a salt marsh that was man-made and now is a protected area. That's not part of the transfer, but that is a protected area in that upper end. And the university is on the southern side of that park, basically where it says Camarillo Regional Recreation Area is where the university butts up against the property.
Great. Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff? We have two public speakers, and pleased to have Dr. Rush here from Cal State Channel Islands. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the board, and thank you for your willingness to consider this proposal. From the point of view of the university, this is a huge advantage because representing the university, I can say that our goal is to maintain the character of the university and the character of that entire area. What it offers us and the people of Ventura County is an enhanced recreation area, but also a place where our faculty and students can pursue research. As was pointed out on the screen, those areas of wetland are perfectly adapted to the kinds of research that our faculty have been pursuing internationally and indeed locally here at Ormond Beach. They are avidly looking forward to the opportunity of exposing to students the opportunity right on our own threshold of wetlands restoration, habitat restoration, and indeed creating a recreation area that's enhanced. I would point out that the only change we intend to make out there is to put a trailhead in through the good offices of the California Conservancy. In the original document, we thought that the National Park Service wanted us to put some sort of recreational area in if it were transferred to us. That is not what we're going to do. We had thought we'd have to put in some open spaces with grass so that people could play soccer or softball or throw a frisbee around. That does not happen to be the case. So we intend to leave the property exactly as it is, and as a sign of good faith, we have voluntarily put a restriction on the Operating Engineers' Trust parcel that makes it identical to the other parcels. So in sum, I hope that you will approve this proposal. We intend to be good neighbors, as we have tried always up to this point to be good neighbors, and to make this an open and accessible area for all the people of Ventura County. I'd be happy to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rush. It looks like we do have questions. Supervisor Long, I mean Parks.
Thank you. It's really nice to hear that you want to help continue to protect those wetlands there. And I know from talking with one of your professors, Sean Anderson's looking forward to, I guess, working with the Coastal Conservancy and helping to restore some of those wetlands. I had seen in the supplemental EIR that is being looked at now for the expansion of the university, talking about putting in ball fields and some lighting in there. At this point, though, you're not seeing that as a use for the park?
No, that's what I was referring to, Supervisor Parks. The development of our playing fields for university purposes will be on our own parcel, which is at the entrance of the university, now ready for change once the state has given us approval to move forward. But on this particular set of parcels, we're not going to change it at all. We did think that we had as a requirement for conveyance the need to put in playing fields out there, but now that we understand that we do not have to do that, we don't intend to do it at all.
Would it be okay, then, on Exhibit Four, where it states, "University will utilize these areas for creative passive spaces as well as open fields that will occur for soccer and other recreational activities," to strike the part about soccer and other recreational activities if you're looking at it just for the natural resources?
From our point of view, yes.
Oh, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I really look forward to the transfer.
Thank you.
Great.
If I could follow up on that, and I appreciate your willingness to do that and your statements to do that, but because this was under your program of utilization that was adopted by the Parks folks, would that be a concern in making that change?
I would be happy to submit a letter saying that while that statement is present in the original document, it is not our intention to pursue it.
Okay, fine.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Rush? Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you all.
Peter Brand, our next speaker.
Chairman Bennett, supervisors, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak today in support of this exciting project. We've been partners with the county many times, but this is our first, the Coastal Conservancy's first opportunity to do a major partnership with Cal State Channel Islands. We've worked a lot, actually, with Jack Broom, who was a major donor, and I understand he just passed away. And so I think this is partly in memory of him. He supported this idea. And I would say that this also goes back to the history of the Cuyahoga watershed planning process. We funded a restoration plan that looked at all the potential riparian restoration opportunities up and down the creek. And I know Supervisor Long and Supervisor Parks have been involved in that process. The steering committee endorsed this project long ago, said it would be a high priority. So now we have an opportunity to do it. We'd like to fund riparian restoration, upland restoration, but also some staging area and public access improvements that will help connect this to other areas, connect it to the coast, connect it up into the Santa Monica Mountains. It's the only public land available for that purpose in Ventura, all the way from Magoo Rock all the way up into Thousand Oaks. So that's a fourteen-mile stretch. And here, this is going to be a place to focus some of that recreational interest up into the mountains and down along the levees to the coast. We're in good shape with that funding. I have some set aside for it. And getting back to this issue of full public use and ownership, as you know, that's a requirement of the Park Service. The university is totally comfortable with this being fully open to the public and not for exclusive use of the university. And that's important to us as a funding agency, too. But I would like to also point out that this is a great opportunity for the students of Cal State Channel Islands. There's an educational element to this. The field of restoration ecology is a growing field in California, and we want them to be involved from the very beginning in the planning and replanting and the removal of invasives and learning from experts like Sean Anderson and our consultants how this is done by professionals in the field so that when they graduate, they can go out and get jobs in restoration ecology. So that's important to us, and we think of, with that involvement, I think the proper word for the university's relationship to this area is as a steward. And I think they see themselves as that way, not the owner, but the steward of this property. And I think the students and the professors will want to engage the community and get them involved in volunteer efforts out there. It's an exciting prospect. So thank you very much. I'm available. If you have any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brand. It's nice to have representatives, esteemed representatives of two organizations we've partnered with a lot on many projects, the university and the Coastal Conservancy here. Let's talk about another great project to partner on. So I'd like to turn it over to Supervisor Long.
Thank you. And thank you for coming in to speak. And I know I don't have to thank you because you've been with us through years of moving this forward. I'd like to mention to President Rush that this morning Supervisor Parks and the entire board spoke about the loss of Jack Broom and knowing how important he was and is to the university. And also, I'd like to just go back to a timeline, and the staff has just done an excellent job on this project, both with Mr. Grossgold and Mr. Van Dyke. And in the board letter, it doesn't even capture the whole history of activity on this property, nor the angst we've had with this property over the years. But I'm going to go forward from November 28th of '05, when we had our first meeting with the university and the park folks to talk about conveyance of this property to the university and taking that step because I've always seen it when we, the county and our Parks Department, just couldn't get a project that fit there well for a variety of reasons, that I've seen this as one of those entryways to the university that is invaluable, I think, in both now what we see in the synergy of the university and conveyance to them and the opportunities for this learning center, this living lab, in addition to the improved access for public and the trailhead and what's being proposed in the program of utilization. So moving forward from 2005 to today has been a trail in itself and torturous at times. We think that we at county have a bureaucracy, or maybe even the Conservancy feels they do, but tell you deal with the feds and the parks. And they're wonderful people, and it was great to really work with them and get through this process and get to where we are here today. But I think what we have before us today is a win-win for a lot of people, the public, the university, the watershed, the habitat, the county. So I just am very appreciative of people staying at the table and working through what was a long path and at times difficult to get to this board today, I think, with a project that, a conveyance that I think is just an excellent opportunity to move this precious piece of property forward into what can be a wonderful, a wonderful center for all of us. So that's my comments. And I'd like to motion forward to, if I might, to move the recommended actions.
So we have a motion by Supervisor Long? And it's been seconded by Supervisor Zaragoza.
Would the make of the motion include deleting reference in Exhibit Four to the soccer fields and play fields?
Absolutely, with the agreement of the university, sure. It's their program of utilization. That's already been accepted by the Parks folks, but we believe and we believe we can do that fine.
Yeah, and the reason I point that out is while the university are great stewards of the land, we are giving the county property that we will have absolutely no say on it ever again because the state doesn't have to abide by county zoning standards and things like that. So I feel like this is our opportunity to reinforce what the university is providing, and that is to have this be for natural open space and that kind of outdoor classrooms, looking at the greenhouse they're going to build, for plant grow out and all those kind of nice programs, one that I enjoy taking a class in that myself. So I appreciate you.
Sure. Certainly accept that.
Supervisor Zaragoza, you're comfortable with the modification also?
Yes, I just wanted to thank-
You're the second on this.
Yes, and I just want to thank President Rush, you know, and Peter Brand and our staff, you know, for an excellent idea. This is great, and it's going to help. We're not going to change the property, which is good. It's going to be a buffer for the university. It's going to help our students out there. I think it's important. Peter Brand is working to restore the wetlands that probably connected to Ormond Beach, to Point Magoo and so forth. And also getting rid of the old dairy. I think it's a liability that the county has. And in fact, somebody mentioned to me, I think it was, I can't remember who it was, the CEO, I think that the only thing that's holding up that building is the graffiti. So we need to get rid of it.
Yeah, really.
So I think that it's to the benefit of all, and I want to thank all of you for Dr., you know, and our staff and Peter Brand for excellent recommendation. And I support, as I mentioned before, I'm seconding this. Thank you.
Before I call for the vote on this, I'd like to compliment Supervisor Long. I know you've worked hard on this issue, along with our partners and our staff, to be able to make this happen. The other thing I would just like to point out is, it certainly started before I got here on the board, so I'm not taking any credit for it. But overall, when you get a great university, it's because it's been pieced together piece by piece. And this is just another example of a piece that someday, when you come back fifty years from now and you look at Cal State Channel Island, this will be, you know, one of those, that's really a classic part of the university. And it's another thing, and certainly in Southern California, if you can cite an open space like this, it's natural and set up like that, it will be very advantageous for the university and all the people that will use the university. So we're turning over to you something that's pretty precious to us, and it is something that we know you're going to do a great job with and letting the public take great advantage of it. So with that, we're ready to vote on the motion as modified. And that motion passes unanimously. Congratulations to everybody. Go forth and do good work, right? All right. We're now ready for our other item that we moved to 1:30, which is Item Forty-Four, and that's the adoption of the Urgency Ordinance and interim moratorium on any and all new assembly uses in the open space. I might point out, how many speakers do we have on this item at this point in time, Robert? Fifteen. In the interest of not having us take a couple of hours on this item, I'm going to ask everybody two things. One, if you can begin now to modify your comments down to three minutes, we would appreciate that. And two, if you can modify your comments below three minutes because somebody's already said what you said, or just because you can do it, we would very much appreciate that also. And so this is an item being brought forward by Supervisor Parks and myself. It follows on our recent vote that we had to make on the Cornerstone Church application that came in front of us. I think that the letter and the ordinance clearly, and we've had them exhaustively reviewed by county council and planning staff for, to be sure that we were legal in all of the language that we use because a moratorium like this, an urgency ordinance and moratorium have some very specific legal guidelines that we have to follow. And I will ultimately turn to county council just to confirm that they've reviewed it extensively and believe that it is legal. And I'm probably more interested just in answering any questions that may be out there. I know one of the questions is, you know, why is this, why do we need an urgency ordinance? And it's specifically spelled out in Section One, Purposes and Intent of the Ordinance, Item G. And I'm just going to read that section into the record, as long as county council thinks that's appropriate for me to do. And that's Item G on page two of the ordinance under Section One. It says, "In Ventura County, there exists a serious risk that reliance on federal laws like Arloopa and other state laws could potentially lead to a greater number and intensity of assembly uses in the open space zone in contemplation of the planning division's development of and the board's consideration and adoption of permanent regulations regarding assembly uses in the open space zone. Because such actions might be in conflict with the contemplated zoning proposal, which the board plans to study and consider in the near future, as well as the stated purpose of open space lands within the county and incorporated areas, there is a current and immediate threat to public safety and welfare should there be any applications for and the approval of any and all new assembly uses in the open space zone." And with that, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Parks, if there's anything you want to add before we start the public- before we start the public comments. I tried to keep my comments under three minutes to model good behavior for our audience out there.
And for fellow board members, right? I just wanted to comment that as a result of this new, well, for us, new religious law, religious protection law, it will, Religious Land Use and Institutional Edict Persons Act, Arlopa, we are looking at a lot more uses of our green belt areas between the cities. The board approved, a couple of meetings back, the approval of a church, a 3,000-seat amphitheater, 1,700 parking space facility. Previously had approved a Bible college to go through the application process. We're seeing a lot more opportunities now to develop in those open spaces that we didn't otherwise know about until we were advised about Arlopa. So what this does is give us a period of time to look at, do we want all these kind of uses that we and our zoning codes had never contemplated before? What we're looking at in terms of an assembly use is defined as a permanent facility, building structure or installation. So all those things are permanent facilities and I can ask our county council to elaborate on that, not, not temporary for horse riding or birthday parties or a tent. We're looking at actual permanent facilities as assembly uses. And with that, I believe strongly in private property rights and I believe if you own a 10-acre parcel, the parcel next door to you is going to build a 1,700 space parking lot and a, you know, potential warehouse, college, all those kinds of things that no one ever thought would be consistent with open space, particularly this amphitheaters, what sticks out in my mind. Those things are not, to me, appropriate in the open space, but this gives us an opportunity to allow our staff to look and, and give us some advice on what in our current zoning text could lead to a lot more development than we had otherwise contemplated. So I'm, I think it's prudent to at least consider what those, those uses are that can be built and whether we really had intended that for our open space zoning. So with that, I'll complete my comments.
Okay. I will, just want to go to county council and ask the one question, actually two questions. And one, I just want to, confirmation that you guys have reviewed this and in your opinion, you believe the ordinance in front of you is legal?
Yes, it has undergone extensive review, as you said, by both my office and by the planning division. And we are satisfied that it meets all legal requirements.
And then could you just confirm the comments Supervisor Parks made about this is, this is for permanent facilities or what are being dealt with?
Yes, Section 3 of the proposed ordinance on page 4 says, "For purposes of this ordinance, assembly use means a permanent facility, building, structure or installation which attracts or may attract individuals or groups of individuals and their motor vehicles." And I understand that there has been some discussion around this question of what this all means when it comes to assembly uses. And I think it may be easiest to try to illustrate with respect to what it is that the planning division does. Number one, they issue permits for various kinds of uses as described in the zoning ordinance and in the zoning matrix. And those, of course, are for permanent uses. They also issue special event permits for one-time events. And of course, there are many things done that require no permit at all. And one of the subjects that has been under discussion from various sources has been, well, what if somebody wants to have a horse show on their property? Well, that may be something that, that might require a special event permit, for example. If it's a one-time event, then it's not a permanent facility and a permanent use. On the other hand, if it's somebody who wants to have continuing horse shows with people coming to their property on a regular basis, then it may be an equestrian center under the zoning matrix that would be a permanent assembly use that would be prohibited by this ordinance.
Thank, thank you very much, Supervisor.
In the instance of the horse equestrian center, what is the permanent facility? What's the permanent building structure that would necessitate going in?
Well, that's a question, certainly that's better answered by the planners to start with than the lawyers because they would turn to us for legal advice if required, but they would have the, the first look at what this is. But I would presume it would be perhaps a horse ring and the other things that go along with putting on a horse show and maybe it would include grandstands if, if we have significant numbers of people coming and assembling for these horse shows.
Okay, and, and as I was looking at this, it's the development, it's the building of buildings, so I guess that's something that we can hammer out in the 45-day period?
And I, I put this PowerPoint slide up just because I thought it fit what I think the spirit of many people when they thought about open space in Ventura County and some of the things, some of the unique things we've done in Ventura County, and I thought this sort of captured that spirit. For those who can't see it, I'll just read it into the record. "In the end, we will be defined not only by what we create, by what we create, but by what we refuse to destroy." And with that, we'll open it up to our public communication, if any supervisors, Supervisor ready for public communication? All right. Michael Kasserman, followed by William Hicks. If Mr. Hicks could move up to the front row while Mr. Kasserman is on, we'd appreciate that. Welcome, Mr. Kasserman.
Good afternoon, members. My name is Michael Kaiserman and I'm the project director for land and acquisition for Hillside Memorial Park in Moratory. I'm here today to request that you do not pass the Urgency Ordinance to stop all development in the OS zone in Ventura County. I've already submitted to the clerk of the board for your consideration an alternative to the legislation before you today. And rather than repeat it, I just would add that we would like to insert "except for cemeteries, accessory crematory, columbaria and mausoleums," and then in the latter part of the wording, "except for funeral and memorial services." Nonprofit organizations like us have to have a realistic chance of success, budget and timeline before they can enter into a purchase agreement or file entitlement documents. Our problem with your urgency ordinance, as it's currently written, is that it would be an almost insurmountable obstacle to Hillside's ability to enter into a purchase agreement. A possible year-long moratorium that might result in permanent changes as to what can be developed in the OS zone is too risky for a nonprofit organization to assume. The passage of this ordinance in its current form will prove to be an unfair burden not only on us, but on property owners as well. An overly broad moratorium on all development in a zone creates uncertainty, unnecessary hardships and is inconsistent with good planning. Your vote to approve this legislation as written can only negatively impact us and force us to radically change our plans. We acknowledge that we must respect the stakeholders' interests and concerns about overdevelopment in the OS zone. However, I think we can all agree that cemeteries are needed in communities and that the Ventura County's OS zone is the best place to plan for them. A memorial park may be the best green transition between zones and uses. Let's not forget, the county, through its arduous CUP process, will be more than able to safeguard citizens' interests when our application is considered before your planning commission. The rights of the stakeholders should be guarded by the government, but this specific moratorium on all development in the OS zone proposed here today is unfair and in our opinion, too broad and too restrictive. We believe that the project that we want to develop is in the true spirit and purpose of OS zoning and sore requirements. We also believe that good planning practice will prove that cemetery uses in the OS zone will remain a permitted use even after the county has had a long period of time to reexamine the current law. Why then deny us the ability to proceed with our development plans now where it's almost certain that we will retain our development rights at the conclusion of a long process? If we fail to take advantage of the current fair market conditions, we may never be able to do so in the future. The project that we will propose will certainly be an improvement over what is now found on the site and that's why we're urging you to adopt the wording in my letter of April 8th.
Thank you, Mr. Kaiserman. That's your three minutes. Supervisor Parks?
Could I ask you a question? We've talked a couple of times, your project includes both, what's it, mausoleum and a crematorium?
Yes.
And you anticipate the application period being longer, obviously, than 45 days? There's no application in?
We have not even begun to enter into a site control document with the owner, so we're right at the beginning of the process.
Okay, so, and from my understanding, our application process can be as long as a year, is that about right? Two years? Okay. All right, I appreciate your comments and I appreciate our dialogue. Thank you.
Mr. Hicks and on deck, Holly LaRue.
Thank you. Thank you very much for allowing me this moment. I'm a over 30-year resident of Newbury Park, so I've been around here a long time. I'm just a concerned citizen. I am opposed to Supervisor Parks and Bennett's proposal for urgency ordinance and a moratorium. I am not a member of Cornerstone Church, but I do believe that Cornerstone Church serves a greater public good than does open space. I am not here to change minds of those that have already made their minds up. I am here to appeal to those who question the need for such a urgent, urgency of a moratorium. I just have a couple of rhetorical questions and it's going to be a comment that's already been said. Why is this an emergency? I opened up my newspaper this morning and saw on the front page of the Star, "Use of Heroin Rising in County." To me, that's an emergency. Is this just an end-run effort to bypass existing law by fiat? And with that, I-
Thank you. Thanks for keeping your comments brief, Mr. Hicks. Holly LaRue on deck, Patricia Snyder.
My name is Holly LaRue and I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks. I'm here to speak in favor of passing the moratorium on the development of any assembly uses in land-zoned open space in Ventura County. I, like many of your constituents, am very fearful of what kind of snowball effect the Cornerstone Church Amphitheater and Warehouse Project could have on what we thought was protected open space. Please take this opportunity to step up to the plate as our elected officials and do what's evidently necessary by law to protect what makes this county so unique and so special, and that's our open space. There was a story in the Star the other day about Liberian President Ellen Johnson Surleaf visiting our area and being so impressed with our oak trees, clean air and lack of traffic due to what she believed was our sticking to our master plan and not allowing overdevelopment. Her comments are indicative of how many, how so many of us feel about preserving the natural beauty and open space in Ventura County. I urge you to please pass this moratorium so that county staff has time to develop the proper legal changes to resolve this problem without violating any federal laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for keeping your comments brief. Patricia Snyder and on deck, Jennifer Amade.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This will be very brief. I doubt the, I'm here to oppose the ordinance. I am a property owner in, in the green belt area and I guess my greatest concern is that we pass ordinances for all open space properties and open space properties are so varied in their size. I can look around my property and I can see a 40-acre piece of property, a 10-acre, a 20-acre, 100-acre, and we seem, and that's just in that green belt area, and we seem to apply this through all of the areas that are covered by the open space properties. I think that properties that have ordinances applied to them should be looked at more individually because a 100-acre parcel could accommodate something that a 10-acre parcel could not. And I just wanted to express that because I find that in reading through the book many, many times of ordinances, that I find inconsistencies and things that would apply to large pieces of property, but not to smaller pieces of property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Jennifer Amade, followed by Deborah Tash.
Hello, good afternoon. I'm Jennifer Amade. I do not agree with this ordinance. I think there is an urgency, but that urgency is to create jobs and opportunities for people in these hard economic times. I think it's important for the board to realize not what's just going on in a county, but the country and the world. We're in an economic crisis and we don't have the urgent, the luxury of stopping small businesses and if there's that word in there that says, "but not limited to," that scares me because you don't know what that's not going to limit it to. And so I just want to think of the small guy who's trying to maintain his open space or his farm. I think it's, we have some of the most beautiful farmland and open space in the country and if you want to maintain it, you have to maintain the person to be able to diversify their land. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Deborah Tash, followed by Lisa Woodburn.
Deborah Tash, I do own land in the open space zone. And I got to just say that even though you don't want to squash individual rights, individual property rights are fundamental to our, the foundation of our country. And by putting more vagaries into the code, you are limiting rights for me to use our property. You can even say, even, even though you said it's only permanent structures, that's your perception, legally, it's anything that occurs on a regular basis. That could include farming. On my property, when I lease it to Underwood Farms, there could be 30 to 40 cars there when, during the harvest, when they're harvesting peppers or cabbage. So that could be an assembly use, occurs regularly, happens several times a year. You cannot put more vagaries on an urgency-type basis. By rushing to judgment on something like this, you are going to rush over our rights on our property and how to use it. I am respectful to my neighbors, I am respectable to my community, but I want them to be respectful and not reactive to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lisa Woodburn and on deck, Eric Nagy.
Hello, thank you for your time this afternoon. I'm Lisa Woodburn. I'm a land use consultant for Jensen Design and Survey and I'm also here asking that you do not support the recommended actions in the board letter today. I don't know if I'm the only one, but I'm having a really hard time understanding how assembly uses in the open space zone constitutes a threat to the health, safety and welfare of the citizens of Ventura County that would warrant the adoption of this urgency ordinance. But be that as it may, I have some problems also with the definition of assembly use. It's very broad. That's already been talked about. Examples in the ordinance are institutional types of uses, but as was already mentioned, it also includes equestrian centers, golf courses, camps, campgrounds, recreational vehicle parks, even regular parks. I mean, they have restroom facilities, those are permanent structures. So, assembly uses is really very broad. I also wanted just to mention, I know the emergency ordinance does not, or excludes modifications to existing uses, but if this were to go on and be approved and let's say all assembly uses in open space are prohibited, what happens to the person who got their equestrian center permit five years ago and it's a 10-year permit? And so five years from now, they have to come back and they have to get an extension on that time and now they're found that they're not consistent with the zoning ordinance anymore. And you might say, well, those will be grandfathered in, but when you grandfather in a use, you restrict the ability to expand that use. And let's say Thatcher School, for example, they have a portion of their property that's an open space and if they wanted to build horse barn, you know, stalls, horse stalls there, they wouldn't be able to do that because even though they're grandfathered in, that would be an expansion of their use. I'm even thinking, if this was done five years ago, we wouldn't- I'm even thinking, if this was done five years ago, we wouldn't have Air Force One at the Ronald Reagan Library, because that would have been an expansion of their use. So, I think it's very, you really need to think about this. I also think that there's enough regulations right now in open space uses. There's a five percent maximum building coverage, people have to have adequate water supply, you can't put a commercial kitchen on a septic system, you need to meet fire department requirements, there's very, already very strict policies on biological and agricultural resources. There's a number of things already in place, and so I really don't think we need anything else. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Parks.
I'm sorry, I know you've read over this information, but it does exempt CUP applications for conditionally permitted assembly uses in the open space zone received on or before March 25th, '09, and modifications of existing CUPs for existing assembly uses.
I understand that that's-
I was just trying to see how that differs from what you're saying.
Well, that's for the emergency ordinance. That's for this forty-five day. What if in the future, that isn't carried over?
Okay. Thanks, I just, I wanted to understand your concern, and I hope if this does pass, that you'll help give us input on how we should fix that text so we don't have this loophole.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Eric Nagy, and on deck, Don Jensen.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bennett, members of the board. I'm Eric Nagy with Jensen Design and Survey. I'm here today to comment on the proposed urgency ordinance and interim moratorium on assembly uses in open space. We have several clients with pending projects that require assemblies. Some of these projects are in open space, and this ordinance will needlessly halt permitting and completion of beneficial uses by stopping these applications from coming in. For example, the National Disaster Search Dog Foundation is proposing a national training center here in Ventura County in Wheeler Canyon. This organization trains canine search teams to find live victims in disasters. You're probably familiar with them. Their permit request is unrelated to RLOPA, which is the base and the heart of this issue, but they would be severely restricted and delayed by the adoption of this moratorium and ordinance request. We began our CUP application preparation several months ago, and we're ready to submit our application very soon here. So, approval of this open space assembly moratorium would prevent the CUP app and others that are beneficial to the county from being submitted until planning rewrites their open space regulations. As you know, these revisions can take quite some time due to the complex nature of ordinance and general plan changes. So, really, approval of this moratorium will effectively stop all open space projects with assembly potential, and not just those religious institutions with overarching state and federal regulations that instigated the moratorium request in the first place. In addition, any existing use with an expired permit would be subject to the same requirements, and as you're no doubt aware, many otherwise innocent and law-abiding permit holders let their permits lapse, were often hard to reacquire their permits, and those permotees that have assemblies as part of that original permit will be stopped from pursuing a replacement permit when that use may not be related at all to RLOPA and may actually be in the public interest. So, the scope of this moratorium, in short, is bigger than the problem that it tries to address, in my opinion, and because of that ask that your board denied the adoption of this moratorium due to the impacts that it will have on pending projects that are not related to overriding state or federal law. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Don Jensen, and on deck, Jeff Strastrum.
Chairman Bennett, members of the board. My name's Don Jensen. Jensen Design and Survey in Ventura. We're a local land use consulting group. Lisa and Eric already spoke about some of the immediate projects that we have that are in the county that would be affected by this ordinance. I would echo our recommendation that we don't support this ordinance. I think my basic problem is, we've developed a kind of continuing cycle here with the general plan changes, you know? If I'm an applicant, I want to do something that changes or has a general plan issue. I have twice a year I have to come in and go through a general plan screening process to be considered with a public notice and, you know, proper notification. Everybody takes a look at it, and it comes before the board and gets considered. This is the second general plan amendment that's come through this board in the last few months. We hear about it like the day before, that, hey, something's coming to the board, and we better find out what, quick. And we come in here and we, you know, have to spend time to figure it out quickly and come in and give half a speech because we can't catch up as fast as everything that's gone in before it. So, in addition to being kind of opposed to this resolution, I'd almost ask the board to consider, when they do come up with general plan amendments that affect the public more so than can find out in a twenty-four or forty-eight hour period, that you go through the same screening process as the rest of the public. We have twice a year opportunity to change the general plan. I'd appreciate if you did the same for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jensen. Jeff, I can't pronounce that last name, I'm sorry.
It's Strastrum.
Gene Donahue's on deck. Thanks.
First of all, I wanted to thank you very much, Supervisor, Supervisors, Chairman and Supervisors, for putting together this moratorium ordinance. I'm here speaking in favor of it, and I think it's something that really needs to be done so we can all kind of step back, take a breath, and look at all of these different things that come in. I live at 815 Terra Rehada, who are right across from the Cornerstone property. Lived here since about seventy-nine, when I think Elvin Starr Ranch was the only other facility out there in the valley, where they're one of the few lights out there. And I don't see but one here from Elvin Starr objecting to any of this. They have a large, if anybody's familiar with Elvin Starr, it's a large boarding, riding, you know? They know what the spirit of the open space is. We all purchased the property, the homeowners, the landowners out there purchased it knowing what the restrictions are. What I find disturbing, I've been having a couple breakfasts with Pastor Chan about what to do with this after the last meeting here, and he's looking to sell the property. I don't know if he's informed you yet. He sent me an email yesterday saying he hasn't informed the county yet, but he approached me two weeks ago about purchasing it. And I know he's been to the Reagan Library, and I know he's talked to the gentleman from the cemetery, and I think a couple other churches. And we're talking about people from outside the original area, and where I kind of come from is, in sixty-three, we moved into San Fernando Valley, about Balboa Boulevard, if any of you are familiar with that. And there was open land between Balboa and Cal State Northridge. And if you drive back into the San Fernando Valley now and look at the density of it, it's just incredible. So, I feel that these open space buffers are very important to maintain, and I feel that there's a lot of business interest here trying to creep in and undo the zoning plan and the general plan that we've got already established. But I think that these different things need to be seen. Pastor Chan told me that, you know, when he regrets getting into this whole thing. When he did originally look at the property, he was told by Gary Seaton, the realtor, that, oh, yes, there's this RLOPA law, and you can take this piece of land that's zoned open space and use RLOPA, and it'll go right through. And he said, I never had any idea that it would cause as much of an uproar. Now, that foothold into this big problem, into this big area, creates the cemetery project, you know, other things coming on, and, you know, I don't know anything about it, but it seems to me it's more development of our area. Anyway, I wanted to thank you very much for your time and effort, and I'm very much in favor of this proposal.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Our next speaker, Gene Donahue, and on deck, Susan Hardenburg.
Good afternoon, thank you for this opportunity. Feel very strongly on this, and I think thirty days is a short time to make a decision on such a large, large item. He just described the San Fernando Valley. I moved there from, to see me some time ago, and my family lives here, they all have businesses here. My grandchildren are planning to take over their father's businesses. So, we plan to be here for a while, at least they do. At any rate, I would believe for the next thirty days, we give plenty of time to look at any item that could be changed, to make RLOPA work, and, but number one is protect the SOARS area. The federal government makes a lot of decisions that are not right. They've maybe declared legal, but doesn't mean they're right. I could look in the newspaper every day. It seemed like everything we're doing now is attempting to mitigate all the influx of traffic, of leaving room for open spaces, for wildlife, for wetlands, and I really applaud that with the college and for you going along with that. I think that's just really great. This area is so precious, and you know, everything is not money. It seemed like everyone who's spoken here has a monetary interest, and it's a conflict of interest to the people, to us, our, not our ancestors, but our, the generations to come. I plead, I plead with you to listen to those issues and not only the money. Now, you could look at RLOPA and say, well, it's very clear. SOARS is very clear as well, and the RLOPA, and those that are attempting to change that to weasel a little idea or to, well, we can look at this loophole. I see all these loopholes every day. We see it in our federal government. We shouldn't have to look at it here. And if any of you have conflicts of interest in this area, I would beg you respectfully to recuse yourself. But at any rate, I thank you for the opportunity, and I truly hope that this goes, is passed, and for the next year, we can certainly understand the difference between a project, as has recently been mentioned, or this sort of project, the southern planters' ideas, and, and the difference between that and having a horse show the last two days, or even an equestrian center. And the fact that we grow property, or we grow food for our table, and they have a few workers there, praise those activities. It's not, it's not something that we need to do without, that the churches or other institutions of that nature, the prayers are not going to do it. It takes God, the way, the water, the rain, all of those things, and the workers in the field with the cars. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Susan Hardenburg, and on deck, Michael Deco.
Thank you for this opportunity. I am the director of a small school in Ojai in the unincorporated area, and I'm absolutely in favor of this protecting of our open space because we benefit so much from it being contiguous in our property. I do ask you to consider, though, some unintended consequences. We have been trying for many years through different ways to gain the use of a very small, tiny bit of orchard so that we can study our orchard and have a garden and have a little patch of grass, which I think is in no way an assembly, and I actually was going to just cede my time, but then when she mentioned the extended use, it would be, I mean, our school isn't assembly, and this isn't extended use, and this is very tiny, but it's these little uses that actually allow us to enjoy our open space more that I would just would ask you to consider while you're drying up your moratorium. Thank you.
Could I ask, are you planning on building a permanent facility there?
Oh, no, no, it's, no, no, it's just for a garden and a little orchard study and a little grass. And so I thought maybe, when I was listening, that it would not apply because there was no assembly, but it's an extension of an assembly area.
The intent is the development.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying.
Michael Deco, and on deck, Monty Witters.
Yeah, they spelled it- Good afternoon, board members.
We don't tolerate poor handwriting in here, Mr. Deco.
My name is Michael Dallo. I'm here in the West County. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposed moratorium. My family, we're fourth-decade farmers here in the county. All of our ranches are in unincorporated areas northwest, east of Santa Paula. I'm also here speaking for some other fellow farmers in the area, all, some of whom may have called you, I hope, or sent emails, or maybe are behind me somewhere. As you know, farmers are pretty knee-jerk about anything that comes to someone telling them to do with their land, but a lot of them are in support of this for a couple of reasons. First of all, it seems, in the simplest way, very prudent. Faced with some new circumstances, it just seems very prudent to say, timeout for a short period, and let's reconsider. We're facing possible new consequences, let's figure out a strategy here that will best address all the needs involved. One of the, probably the biggest reason that we all have opposition to it is, as farmers, we're concerned about the continuing incursions into our areas. There are a lot of difficulties that come along with these, be it something as simple as a cemetery, or a church, or what have it. You know, people start playing around your property, equipment is damaged, I could bring in farmers who could give you a firsthand knowledge of having had this, having had that myself. We, as farmers throughout the county, pour thousands of dollars, actually millions of dollars into the county economy, and there are people like packing houses in Oxnard that are part of this whole equation that are affected by this. And the more we allow incursion into these areas, it impacts the farm, it puts more pressure on us. There are many who might oppose it for, someone mentioned, for possible personal financial gain. We're opposed, what we would actually, you know, gain as these more incursions come into farmland, most of us would gain. If we want to sell out, we can make a lot more money by selling to a developer than we can in farming, but we believe in farming, that's our lifestyle, and we believe it contributes to our, the great quality of life in our county as a whole. So, we oppose, rather, we support this. We oppose continued incursions. It seems very simple, let's take some time out and look at things.
I just want to be clear.
No, I, we are in favor of the proposed moratorium.
You're in favor of the moratorium, you're opposed to further incursions into the open-
Yes.
That's what you're talking about. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Monty Witters, followed by Maria Mason.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Monty Witters. I'm a land use attorney here in Ventura County, a city attorney as well, and I here representing several property owners and private schools that have facilities in open space areas. My main concern is what I perceive to be a rush to judgment. I see no required emergency. In my opinion, the required findings of this very drastic law, by the way, it is a very drastic law, and that's why the law requires that there be a four-fifths vote in order to pass the moratorium, even interim moratorium. And another thing I think is important for the board to understand is, yes, there is a forty-five-day look back, and then you have to pass it again to get to one year, that requires a four-fifths vote, and then you can pass it up to two years, and it even is lawful to allow it to elapse and to pass another one, and for another two years, and so on. So, what could be a temporary preliminary moratorium could become almost permanent. Now, this statute, this moratorium statute, requires that this board find serious health and safety and urgency issues. I respectfully request that subsection G of the ordinance, which says that there's a serious possibility that people maybe rely on a lawful, by the way, RLOPA is a lawful federal law, and it was not passed, in all due respects to Councilman Parks, to Supervisor Parks, it was not passed yesterday. It's been around for ten years. Yeah, well, perhaps the board members didn't know it, but both of us in the business have known about RLOPA for a long time. And whether you agree with its purpose or not, it is a lawful federal law. And so, to say that the urgency is, people might rely on their federal rights, I just don't think that rises to constitute an urgency. And the other thing is, I don't see a lot of churches lining up. There doesn't appear to be a rush to buy acres and acres of open space land all of a sudden, or private schools. I just don't see it. I think that you need a factual basis for your allegation that there's a serious concern that people will rely on the federal law to invade our open space. And I don't understand why the normal process of planning should not apply, since RLOPA has been around for ten years, and you feel that it may cause you some concern as a county, go through the normal planning process. Take it to your planning commission, let them study it, let there be public hearings. By the way, this is not a notice public hearing.
Mr. Witters, I'm sorry, your time is up. Mr. Witters, I'm sorry, your time is up.
Let me just want one more point.
Very, very.
The, if you do feel that you need to pass this urgency, I urge you to give more thought to the definition of assemblies. As been pointed out here, it's very broad, and I think it carries with it unintended consequences.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Maria Mason, followed by Russ Baggerley.
Thank you. I'm Maria Mason. I live in the San Francisco Zona Knolls, and we're an area surrounded by open space, and quite frankly, I'm more nervous about, I'm very much in support of this ordinance, because sitting here today, listening to how much stuff wants to go in the open space, I'm really quite shocked. I mean, we all sit back thinking the open space is there, and we're talking about mega-churches, but it seems to me there's a bunch of people here talking about things to go in the open space, all kinds of facilities. So, living in an area with all this open space, we think we need to all step back, and perhaps if the county stepped back many years ago, we wouldn't be looking at what we're looking in the Terre Haute Valley right now. It's because no one stepped back and looked at it, and there were all these loopholes that what got in there, got in there. Started out just being the Reagan Library, it certainly has expanded from there. So, I'm not opposed to the church or the library, I just think it's time to step back and really look at county-wide. This isn't about the Terre Haute Valley, this is about all of the unincorporated areas, and there's a lot of us out there that live in these little communities with this open space above us and around us, and I think it's time to step back and look at it and say, that's all this is asking to do. I don't think anybody's saying, we're not going to allow to build anything. I think we're just going to step back and see what we're doing here. So, I applaud both of you for coming forward with this.
Ms. Mason, can I ask you a question?
Supervisor Foy. Okay. What is in the Terre Haute Valley that, besides the Reagan, that you see, besides homes and things in there?
There's the Reagan Library, there's the driving range that's down there. I'm not, this isn't about the Terre Haute Valley to me, this is about open space in the unincorporated areas.
No, I understand it, but I'm just saying, you said all these things that are there, and I'm just curious what's there, besides you excluded the Reagan Library. I mean, there's homes, there's people that own their property, they build homes.
That's fine, that's what they knew. They bought in the open, I don't care if people come and build homes in the open space above me, but I'm listening to a lot of people here today talk about other uses that they would like to put in the open spaces. And I can see as time marches on, and space becomes more valuable, we will look at a lot more in the open spaces. I think that the people that live in these areas, they think it's going to be a home on 10 acres or a home on 40 acres, but I think you can come into the county and you can change it. So, this man that says things are just there, we already have all the rules. If we already had all the rules, then we wouldn't see all the loopholes and the changes that happen.
Well, that's why I was asking what the changes have happened, because it sounds like there's nothing that's happened. This is the first thing that we've seen happen, which is the church property that's happened, and based on a federal law, and federal law always.
Well, I think the driving range is there, and I don't think the driving range, to me, is an open space thing with all its lighting. I mean, to me, that should have never been there, but it's there. And I'm afraid that when we open the doorway to one thing, we're opening it wider to much more, and you're a supervisor, you know our open space.
Right, so there's a golf course across the street from that, and there's a driving range on one side, so is there one that doesn't go? Is that what you're trying to say? I mean, I'm not.
I'm not arguing about the Terre Haute Valley.
That's what I wanted to find out.
No, I'm just in favor of this. Thank you.
I'll put the speaker under that. Thank you. Russ Baggerley.
Supervisor Bennett, my speaker card was actually for item 46, but I will take a moment to give the board support for this interim ordinance.
Will you please change your card, because?
It says item 46.
Yeah, we've already acted on 46.
Oh, really?
46 is not a time-certain item, we handled that this morning.
I will give you my support for this urgency ordinance. All that's on the chopping block right now is time. This is a, the urgency ordinance is in the government code to give some breathing time for legal jurisdictions to step back and see what is actually proper. This all started when Supervisor Flynn decided that he wanted to have government buildings in open space, and then the slippery slope started with the Reagan Library, and it goes on and on about what's going to be allowed in open space. It is time for a breather, and I do support this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That ends our public speakers, and it's time for us now to have our deliberation on this. I'd like to point a few things out for the benefit of the board members as we're considering this. Number one, we've had a request, you know, hey, make an exception to the moratorium, you know, let some assembly uses be okay, and not other assembly uses. And I want to tie that to comments made that, you know, people are taking advantage of their federal rights, and I think, and I hope the county council will correct me if I'm saying this wrong, but I think that you don't have a federal right with our Rupa to do something in the open space. You have a federal right to be treated the same as anybody else is treated in the open space. So, if I make an exception for this use, and somebody comes along with a religious use, and they're a similar use, I have to make, I have to treat them the same. And that is the issue. The issue is not denying somebody their federal rights. We couldn't do that if we wanted to by emergency ordinance, or we couldn't pass an emergency ordinance saying, we're taking away your federal rights. What we are doing is trying to align our county laws with this federal law, because our current county law specifically, as identified by county council, specifically has some conflicts with federal law, because it doesn't treat everybody the same. So, what we're saying is, timeout, we've got to fix our law. I think everybody up here says we've got to fix our law. County council would say we have to fix our, so we have to fix our law. The question is, while we're fixing it, it seems like we should have this temporary moratorium, and I would offer to you, this is a temporary moratorium, and I think that this board has consistently acted in good faith, and has a great track record of acting in good faith. I don't think there's any possibility that we're going to extend this for two years, and then start it up again and extend it for two more years after that. I think we would all say that's not temporary, and that's not fair, in terms of doing this. We need enough time for an overburdened planning staff to get moving and put this together. So, we're not taking away anybody's federal rights, we're trying to find a way to treat everybody fairly, and still very appropriately meet the goals that the vast majority of citizens in Ventura County have spoken in favor of, and is expressed in our general plan, which says we have some idea of what we think about open space, and we want to try to maintain that idea, not have that be lost because we have a law that is in conflict, or we have zoning ordinance that is in conflict with federal law. That's all we're trying to do. So, when some peoples talk about some uses that might be very consistent with where the county is, as expressed by the Board of Supervisors, and consistent with where the vast majority of citizens are, those are all things that are going to be considered as planning puts together the new law. But what I can tell you right now is, even those uses, I mean, we can't tell you what can and can't be done now because we have this conflict that is out there. So, we've had some arguments that, you know, this would be good for the county if this happened, or that would be good for the county. This doesn't permanently stop any of that from happening, and I'm not sure it even stops all of those things. It stops new assembly uses, and if we make an exception and say, we only want to stop some of the new assembly uses, I'm sure county council would sit there and say, we've got some problems if we tried to do that. So, I would encourage us, this, we need time, we're only allowed to do 45 days right now. Planning can't get it done in 45 days, but they can get us a report in 45 days to tell us what they can get done, where, how we can go about doing this, let's county council do that. But it is out there, and I think it is very hard for us to determine how many people, now that we've had an example with the cornerstone application coming forward, I think it's very difficult for us to know how many people would be out there, taking advantage of the fact that land in the open spaces can be purchased at a lower price than land in other areas that are zoned for development. And so, it is difficult for us to ascertain how bad that is, but there is a potential issue for people to take advantage of that, and hard for us to know what the limits would be in terms of how many people would come, which is why we say in here, there is a significant threat to the goals of the open space portion of our general plan. So, I would certainly encourage the Board of Supervisors to support this ordinance, and I would just offer one other thing. As we had significant conversations and spent significant resources and time with the professional outside attorneys we brought in to look at our law, to look at our Rupa, and to try to advise us, I think we certainly had that feeling that we had some significant issues that we needed to address, and that this moratorium gave us the time to do that as we hark back to those long discussions that we had at that point in time. Thank you. Supervisor Foy.
Thank you. I just need to get a couple of things clarified first before I make some comments, and I don't know if this is planning, Kim or Dan, or is this with our county council. When it says immediate threat to public safety and welfare, what are we talking about there? Does anybody have an answer to that?
All zoning laws predicated upon public health, safety, and welfare. That's the reason that it exists, is to separate uses and regulate land use for the preservation of those things, public health, safety, and welfare. The way it's structured in California, you have a general plan that is, in effect, the constitution of land use planning for the jurisdiction, and zoning is supposed to implement what that general plan is. And we have a situation here where our constitution, the general plan, appears to be threatened with respect to the open space zone. And so, when there is a threat, in essence, the public health, safety, and welfare kicks in, and it is that concern that has to be vindicated by appropriate zoning that fits the general plan.
Okay, so no bodily threat, body threat or anything public safety?
No.
Okay, great. All right, well, that's good. Kim, can I ask you a question, if I may? This ordinance requires this 45-day period, where I think we're saying, come back within a certain period of time, to give us a plan, as Supervisor Bennett just explained. What's involved in you having to go through and do that?
What's involved staffing-wise?
Yes, for you to do that.
Well, it's actually been 30 days. We would have to report back, which gives us probably about 20 days to work on it and get something for the council review. It's a significant effort from the planning department to bring back something worthy to the board, so it would be probably the majority of my time, and the majority of staff time, and Dan's time, and the majority of Robert's time over the next 20 to 25 days.
So, during this time, we are going to make a, it's going to have to be a major concentrated effort and pull everybody off, or most everybody off of what they're already doing, in order to do this?
Well, because it's such a concentrated amount of time, yes, we have to do that.
Right, and so, it's not a lot of time to make any, well, it's going to take a lot of in-depth, as we've heard here, a lot of in-depth thinking and process to do that. And then the recommendation is only at that point to look at what we're doing, because if we don't have enough time, then we, then the board can vote on this again to extend this for another year, right? And to give you more time, if possible.
As I understand that, and maybe county council would want to jump in, we would have to bring you back something in that 45-day period, and you would have to vote on what we bring you back in that 45-day period.
And there may be something to do that with. I guess I'm looking at this as a situation, but let's say you bring back something that looks like we want to do, and to go through during this period of time to do that, what kind of, what are you looking at to possibly to go and to go through this? I mean, do you have staff? Do you have people in-house that can do this? Do we have to go outside to get additional staff to go through this, or what?
If we went past the 45 days, you know, we would have to take a look at that, especially, you know, in light of what Supervisor Parks said this morning, which is something that we are currently working on. We want to bring back to the board all of the projects that we're working on with a timeline, and we've been in that process for a couple of weeks now for the budget and the associated staffing. So, if that is passed, if this is passed, that will be one of those items that are brought forward in this priority list of what you would like the planning staff to work on, and then depending on how that goes, we would have to decide if there was funding available for an outside party to look at this, or if the board wanted to shift the priorities of other things that were on our plates right now to perhaps make this a priority. I would say that it would have to be in the light of the relatively short timeframe, even a year is a pretty short timeframe to take a look at something significant.
Right, to do something this major, a year would be done. So, in that sense, you would have to shift a lot of resources and stop doing all the other things that we were doing, or curtail a lot of those things in order to do something like this, or go outside and hire resources to do this, so you could keep other things going.
Yeah, we would have to reprioritize or receive funding from the board.
And if you have some idea what this could cost to do this?
I don't have any idea at this time. I would have probably a better idea in the 30 days when we come back, but I don't have an idea right now.
But I mean, to go something major, it's not going to, something that's going to, it's going to spend tens of thousands of dollars, or hundreds of thousands of dollars possibly. I don't want to, you know, I mean, you can give me round numbers, I'm just trying to understand what the real cost of doing this is.
You know, even I don't really have an idea until this 30 days, because, I mean, based on the decision of the board today, we would really have to go back and take a look at the ordinance in its entirety, and bring it back to say, is there small things that we could do to meet the objectives, or are we going to be doing a large revision of the whole ordinance?
Right, okay. And then, you, at this point forward, I mean, from this point right now, as you know, do we have any other applications in from any nonprofit organizations in the open space for facilities or anything else that we know? I mean, like churches or something like that? Because I know this has all come back out of the situation, so.
I don't know of any churches that we have in, per se, but I haven't taken a look at exactly assembly uses that we're in. The term is broad, and so that would be the first thing that we would really want to come back in that timeframe and define what that means.
Okay, all right. Well, great, I appreciate the information, so thank you. I guess I look at this, and I start to understand, you know, a couple of things here. First of all, we understand that we had a situation with an organization, a church who came in there, and a law that, like Supervisor Parks said, we didn't know about, or hadn't heard about, and there maybe there's other ones out there. But I think one of the gentlemen out here talked about that this law's been around for 10 years, and we haven't seen that happen. I guess I get a little concerned when, all of a sudden, property rights are impugned and very restrictive things happen instantly like that. I mean, none of us want to see our open space developed, there's no question. We have laws, we have SOAR, we've got all these zoning, we've got, and you think about, that's why I was asking the woman what she meant by that. I mean, we're talking about people can build homes and can do those kind of things, that's great. We don't see a lot of big things. I think that even in the presentation by cornerstone, I think there was five things. We had our prison, we had the Reagan Library, the Aquinas College, Brandis. There's not been a lot of things, and those were even done, and a lot of those years and years ago. So, I think we have ordinances that protect us. Why do we need to take steps that is so onerous? I mean, when you say any and all, I mean, that is so inclusive, and the idea that somebody else, we just talked about with the horse shows, and they want to do horse shows, and they want to do that, and they build a barn, and they build an arena, and maybe they build it because it's hot and they want to build a covered arena, which they could do, but because it's got structures, we can't, they can't do that. I guess I look at this as an ability for us to, we want to protect, but do we, first of all, want to protect people's rights? Because there's, all of a sudden, we came up, there's a lot of things out here that people came up with, that I'd be honest with you, I was trying to think of them, I came up with, you know, the horse show and a couple of these things. I didn't think of all the other stuff people were talking about, and I'm looking at a map right here that shows the open space and all this in green, and it's over half of our whole county is open space. I don't know what people don't know that's out there, that we could be putting limits on, that we could be really in hampering their ability to do what they want with their property, even within our current ordinances. And we got to understand, we've got some of the most restrictive ordinances in the state. It's not like we have, you know, this go-do-anything, like one person said, the San Fernando Valley, and I do, I moved from there, and I love living out here. I love the idea you come out here, it's open, it's green, we've got agriculture, we've got this great mix, our cities don't bump up against each other, that's great. Nobody wants that. And, but I think going this far puts us in a position that we just are saying that we're going so far, and we don't know the unintended consequences of making this happen, and if we get to a point where we have to extend this, how much further are we going? I mean, we just heard. I mean, we just heard that the possibility of this church selling their property off. So maybe that church isn't going to happen anyway. But I just hate the idea that we would make, and I don't want to call it a knee-jerk reaction, because, I mean, it's not knee-jerk, it's been thought out, but I don't want it to be such a, you know, just an extreme, to one side, stop everything just to do this. Because in order to, for a lot of these organizations to build in the open space, it is very, very expensive. And I would take it different than what Supervisor Bennett said in regards that it's cheaper to build in the open space. I wouldn't say that's true, because in order to have, like we just heard earlier, you can't have a commercial kitchen, you know, bathrooms, all that stuff are not going to be on set, but they must have these elaborate waste facilities that are very, very expensive to do. I just think what you have is, for, you know, if a university wants to come out and wants to, you know, if USC says we'd like to put a new campus, where are you going to find space but in the open space? That's why I think they left it that way, to allow those things to happen. I think, you know, the Aquinas College, I mean, that's a great opportunity. It's an employer, it does a lot for us. I mean, there's a lot of things that that helps us as a county and gives us some uniqueness. But without some of those places to go, it wouldn't happen. Same thing with our Todd Road Jail. Where would you put another jail? You don't have that kind of facility, in space, to put those kind of facilities available. So I think we have to be careful that we just don't run down and put all of a sudden an urgency ordinance. And I don't even know how many urgency ordinance we've done over the last 25 years. I don't know if it's been a lot of them. But we can still accomplish what we want to accomplish without taking, you know, half of all of the county and putting pressure and doing things to people we don't even know about, and we can still accomplish that. I don't see that we don't have to not move down and try to help move through these new laws and new ordinances without putting the pressure on the planning department, which we heard today, there's some other pressure they'd like to, to get some, you know, get some priorities done. Well, now, all of a sudden, that can't happen, if this is going to happen. I mean, there's a lot of this that we have to understand and take into an account here when we move forward, so my comments. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If we have nobody else, I'm happy to make, I'm happy to respond, but I sort of, Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes, you know, I, you know, this is, I support, you know, the goal of providing open space, and I'd like to commend Supervisor Bennett and Parks for bringing this emergency ordinance and for review and consideration. And of course, based on federal legislation and what has recently occurred on open space, we have some concerns, you know, about the open space zoning that is at risk. While I support the goal to maintain an open space, I also support the rights of our churches and other organizations, and I don't want the federal laws or constitutional rights infringed on. There are churches and religious groups that own their own space, open space property, and they may be asking in the future for some consideration for a church or something to be built on that open space property. There are also others that own their own open space properties and that are considering or reselling their properties, such as cemeteries and other open space projects. But I'd like to see, I'd like to have some time at this, to consider the possibility of, let me back up, I would like to have some time to consider this as a possibility of being acceptable under the open space land use program. While I support the urgency ordinance today, I also have some concerns, and I'll support the ordinance today. But this ordinance, of course, is a 45-day ordinance, and this is subject to, for discussion in the future, to provide direction and develop some amendments to it. So I'd like to ask the county staff to look at the feasibility of maybe looking at a narrow open space and where we could possibly allow some churches or cemeteries and so forth, and to bring those for consideration back to us. And again, you know, I'd like to commend you, Mr. Bennett, and Linda Parks also for bringing this to our attention, and also I'll support it at this time. And I'd like to have some more information from our planning staff as to what we can build in the, this narrow portion of the open space, and how we can accommodate the constitutional rights and rights of other landowners.
Thank you very much. I have just a few points I'd like to make in response to some of the comments that we just heard, and certainly appreciate Supervisor Zaragoza's support for this ordinance at this point in time. I mean, bottom line is, we can't pass a perfect law. We can only do the best that we can, and that's really what we're trying to do. So, you know, the enemy of doing good sometimes is the demand that you have to have something perfect. It is, there's no question that the majority of the people in Ventura County want us to be very cautious when it comes to development of the open space. And those people are not here today, but I think it's very clear that's where they are, and I think we heard from a lot of those people in terms of their emails, et cetera. We can do both, and that is, we can have the right developments in the right places, and we can preserve the right things also. And that's what's unique about Ventura County, is that we are doing both. We're not saying, no, we're not going to do anything. We're saying, here, we're going to be more cautious, and we're going to identify those areas that we don't want to have urban encroachment into, et cetera. And by the way, I'm not saying development is less expensive, I'm saying the land is less expensive, and that is what's attractive to people. But, you know, the question was rhetorically asked here by Supervisor Foy. Where would we put a Todd Road Jail if we had this in place? As Supervisor Zaragoza just talked about, this is buying us time so that we can look at all of the possible options. And some of those options include, as we've heard from some of the professionals that have talked to us, it would include that some areas might be designed open space with no assembly uses. Other areas might be designed open spaces with some assembly uses. I don't know what staff ultimately will come up with and recommend, et cetera, but that would deal with the federal law, which would say, in the places where we do say some assembly uses, now we're not discriminating against religious institutions, and in other places, we're not. So there is a whole host of things that can happen, but we won't have the ability to have a rational discussion of that if, in the middle of it, we're processing applications that are coming in, like the application that we recently processed. I heard the line, nobody wants our open spaces developed. And I hear that almost every time that there is one of these heart-to-heart conversations about what's happening out there in open space. And yet I would offer to you, some of us supported a big warehouse in the middle of open space. I don't think that that's what the average citizen thinks is appropriate in open space. I would offer to you that in the San Fernando Valley, there was never a plan that said, we're going to develop the land between all the cities in the San Fernando Valley. Nobody ever wrote that plan. But the reason it happened was it was one exception after another. But every time they wrote the plans, they said, we're going to keep a green belt buffer between our cities, and then they went and they put one thing in, and then another thing in, and then pretty soon it was like, well, there's so much out there, fill in the gaps. That's how the San Fernando Valley was lost. It wasn't lost because somebody said, it's time for us to pave over San Fernando Valley. So when you hear that statement, nobody wants our open space developed, you have to ask, how does that translate into what you actually do when the exceptions come forward? The exceptions that start you down the road in terms of development? And so I'd just like if, I don't know if you have the ability up there to put my quote back up there, but I'd like to put my quote back up there, because there's just one thing I'd like to say. And in the end, we'll be defined not only by what we create, and we have created some great things here in Ventura County. CSUCI, right? That university, right? I think, you know, the majority of people say, that's a great thing that we created, right? And yet, at the same time, we gave the CSUCI today some open space that we don't want to have. We can do both. We need to work intelligently, and we need the time to be able to work intelligently, given the fact that we have this new issue that we have to deal with, which is this conflict between where we are and the federal law that we have. Thank you very much. Supervisor Zaragoza, you've already been on, Supervisor Long, I'm sorry.
Okay, just a few comments. This is very complex and is difficult, but it was identified to us that we have an error in our laws that created discrimination, so we need to address that. And I think that we have, we're asking here for a relatively short period of time to put a framework around, how can we address that? What will it cost? And how long will it take? I, too, have great concern with language like any and all new assembly uses. Maybe the word is, how is assembly defined? Or how is new defined? Or, you know, what framework are we going to be able to work with to address the issue that brought us here, yet not have unintended consequences in uses that we have either by practice or policy adopted in this county? Our university being one, our Todd Road Jail being one, as was mentioned subliminally, there was great opposition to the sighting of the Todd Road Jail in that open space area. So I think the challenge before us will be to try and get something that we can all live with, that I think gives us the ability to be as aware as possible of any unintended consequences, to look at as we do on all changes, I think, those that are grandfathered uses, and maintain some existing language that is, has been germane to our open space zone and goals and policies, and yet bring balance to the challenges that, again, have brought us here today. So I am open to supporting this today. I will not be open to extending this for years and years, and you said that, so I don't think anyone is. I'm not even implying that. So that means that this board, when it comes back with a framework, and if the framework comes back and says, this is more complex, it will require X amount of resources and X amount of time, that, you know, at the end of the day, there may be a no vote.
Supervisor Foy.
Supervisor Long, let me ask you then. We have this issue with our current ordinance, which I think an attorney had told us, we have one of the most discriminatory ordinances in the country, is what they said. We have to change that no matter what.
Right.
So why do we need an urgency ordinance to do that? What, under what condition do we have to do? We're going to have to change that anyway, and it's going to take us time, no matter what Kim and Planning brings back. So I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what is the urgency ordinance that we need? We're going to have to go through that process. At the same time, when we do this, we put a whole lot of risk. And you just made a tremendous comment, and I appreciate that, that we're not going to vote for years to go. So the idea during the next 30 days, why do we have to put that urgency? I don't think there's a line of people, churches and organizations that want to do that. I think that's all we're trying to say here, is that there's this supposed line of people willing to do that. I don't think we have that. And I think Supervisor Zaragoza made it, we don't want to discriminate against these organizations that already own their land, that have purchased it years ago to do those kind of things. We don't want to take property rights from those people. But at the same time, I still believe that it is so expensive. I mean, Supervisor Bennett said it's the land is less. Well, when somebody's going to purchase, when somebody's going to build a project, it's land, cost, everything combined is what the cost of the project is. So I still think it's too expensive for most churches to go, and, or these organizations to go in the open space. They would rather go in a building that's already built, they'd rather do those kind of things. It's much cheaper for them to do. At a time when most of these nonprofit organizations have very little money, they're all hurting. We've seen that nationally, the charities, churches, and everybody are struggling tremendously. So, but why do we have to go with an urgency ordinance? What is such an urgency to do that? The only thing I can think of is that we have this whole line of people who want to put submissions for these, to the planning department, and I don't think we have that. And at the end, is 30 days, 45 days, that big a deal? We do have to change our law. We do not want to be known as one of the most discriminatory counties around. We don't, we don't want to do that. I don't care if it's churches, I don't care if it's businesses, or, you know, or people's, you know, whatever they do. We shouldn't, we shouldn't be that. We should find a balance. And I think at the end, but also, let me ask, going back to Supervisor Bennett, we talked about not wanting to develop. We couldn't develop in our open space if we wanted to. We can't develop. So what's the relative understanding of development? What do we mean by development? We could not, you can't put housing tracts in open space, it requires a SOAR vote. We've done that, we've taken care of that. We can never look like the San Fernando Valley. So every once in a while, out of, you know, tens of thousands of acres, one time in 10 years, an organization, a church comes up and said, we'd like to do something on a couple acres, on, you know, on 130 acres, and they were going to donate, what, 80, 100 acres to the library. So it was a very narrow piece, out of thousands and thousands of acres. I don't think we have that really going on. So I think that's important, that we understand. My thing is, is like you said, that any and all, it's so broad. If we just said, any this, any that, and I understand, because we can't be discriminatory, we have to use broad, very broad language, but do we really want to do that to, you know, the thousands of property owners in this green area? I mean, that's pretty difficult. So, anyway, comments.
Thank you. Supervisor Parks.
Yeah, I was just, a couple of comments, too, and I'll sum up. If there aren't, if there isn't this huge, long line of people, and you don't think you can develop in open space, then that kind of takes away the argument about why you'd be against the moratorium, since they're not out there anyway.
We saw, the people came out and said they...
And to that, someone commented that they'd rather have a church than open space. And I would say, it's not a choice, you can have both. And many religions believe strongly in the environment and protecting God's nature. And being able to protect these open space, green belt areas, and have your churches in the city where people assemble generally, to me, is appropriate use. And when we go to define what should and shouldn't be in the open space area, now that we know that there's a bit of a loophole that allows a lot of different uses in there, we have to look at what is consistent with agriculture, what is consistent with open space. And we have a description of what is considered consistent with open space. It's the protection of natural resources, it's outdoor recreation, which includes horse riding, it's preventing urban sprawl. So we've already got a definition, but what our text allows in those open space zones is not consistent with the protection of open space as we have called for in our policies. You had mentioned that, you know, those open spaces are left for us for things like USC. Where else are they going to build? Well, to me, I don't think it's appropriate for them to be building in open space zone. And the nice thing about Cal State University, Channel Island, is it was already developed. They didn't go and take the lemon orchard and turn it into a university. And that kind of smart planning and holding to our open space goals, to me, is what makes our county so special. Someone mentioned a restroom in a park. I mean, please, that's not a place people assemble. We try to discourage that. It should be one person per stall. But I don't, I think we have to be realistic and look at what it is we, is consistent with open space. Regarding church use, before we, I think, had this understanding of our LUPA, we had just the belief that the SOAR ordinance would take care of it. And actually, we did have a church expand some fields, and it had to go to avoid the people, and the people said that's fine with them. But this whole idea now also precludes the ability for people to have a say in what goes in the open space. So I think as long as we keep to what our policies and our goals are for open space preservation, I think we can come up with some good uses that are consistent and are generally acceptable. And I look forward to taking this short period of time and trying to weed out what we can do, and I appreciate the input today, and hope that you will continue to give input as we go through this process, so that we can have a reasonable ordinance that will actually do its intended purpose.
Supervisor Long, I'll try to give you the last word.
Well, I'll just make a final, if I can, comment. I don't know that there's a line of folks, but I have been in conversation with one, another church interest. And as one supervisor, I would look at and say, well, that's pretty non-intrusive, but what's the exception to the rule? And I think what this issue brought to us with the RUPA was, was the need to at least have further discussion and take some time to take a look, a close look at this. At the end of the day, as I said, there may be a no vote, because it may just be that the answer is, we put whatever language the law requires, and we have to move on. And then you deal with applications on a piecemeal basis through a CUP process. I don't know what options we have. I'm not the planner, I'm not as creative as I'd like to be in looking at what other ways could we define this. So I'm open to hearing that, but I think this gives us just enough breathing time to do that. But again, I'll be very open to hearing the pros and cons and the options, and whether or not this goes beyond this first period of time.
You can go ahead and move your motion.
Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Remove the recommendation as outlined.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded, we're ready to vote. And the vote passes four to one. The motion passes. Thank everybody who spoke on both sides of the issue here today.